Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. And welcome to the Calabasas City Council meeting of May 26, 2021. Uh, it's about 7:15 PM. We apologize for being a little bit late. We were in closed session. We turn to our city attorney, Matt Summers. Do we have anything to report out of closed session?
Mr. Mayor, the city council met in closed session and considered three items. Conference of real property negotiator regarding 27040 Malibu Hills Road. Public employee performance evaluation for the city attorneys. And conference of legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation in one matter. For which the facts and circumstances that might result in litigation. The city believes are not yet known to potential plaintiffs. No reportable action was taken on any. Thank you.
Thank you. Tonight I'm joined by Mayor Potem Mary Sumaur, council members Peter Kraut, Alicia Weintraub, and David Shapiro, as well as our staff. The meeting is being conducted utilizing Zoom teleconferencing. The live stream of the meeting may be viewed on the city CTV channel three and or online at www.citiacalabasas.com/ctvlive. If you plan to provide public comment, please press raise hand if you're joining via Zoom. Or star nine if you're joining via phone and star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the city you live in. You'll be allowed three minutes to address the city council regarding any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. One little addendum to that, I would ask that you wait until we get to the item before you raise your hand. That way, you know, not all the hands are raised for every item because then we can't ask you, we'll have to bring you in one by one to see what item you're on and we'll have to put you back if you're not on the right item. So just wait until your item is called. I'll allow an opportunity for people to raise their hands and raise your hand for that item only. Okay, in the event a quorum of the city council loses electrical power or suffers an internet connection outage not corrected. Within 15 minutes, the meeting will be adjourned. Any items noticed as public hearings will be continued to the next regularly scheduled meeting of the city council. Any other agenda items the council has not taken action on will be placed on a future agenda. The pledge of allegiance will be led by our city clerk, Mari Hernandez.
Please join me in alighting our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mari. We hope to relieve you of that duty very soon. When we can meet together again.
Do not mind, Mr. Mayor.
You don't mind? Okay, not that you aren't doing a good job, by the way. I didn't mean to imply that you were not doing a good job.
And I was also ready to do it tonight, by the way.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll lose you. You're up next and it's meeting. All right. Now I have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Kraut.
Aye.
Councilmember Shapiro.
Yes.
Councilmember Weintraub.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Mauer.
Aye.
Mayor Bosaja.
Aye.
Carrie Spicer, 50.
Thank you. And now we have, one of my favorite events is the annual book donation by the Los Virginus Municipal Water District, our partner. And today we have Linda Lowhill. From the Board of Directors, if we could bring her in. I believe right now she's the only board member who, yeah, she's the only board member who actually is one of our residents. And it's a pleasure to see you again, Linda.
Hi there.
Last time I saw you was at the COVID clinic. I mean, not that you had COVID, but you were getting vaccinated with me. I hope you had a better reaction.
I had a good reaction.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so are we ready for me to do a presentation? Okay, good evening, everyone. Good evening, council members and general public. I am Linda Lowhill, talking to you tonight as a director of Division Two of the Los Virginus Municipal Water District. Each year, the water, the water district donates books to the City of Calabasas Library, as well as other educational institutions. The books are for adults and children alike and look at the significance of water from several different points of view. This year is a particularly difficult water year. On April 21st, the governor announced a state of emergency proclamation. We are in our second year of California drought. The Northern Sierras have received less than half of their annual precipitation compared to average. Furthermore, as the Sierra snowpack melts, the soils below the snowpack are so dry. That they are expected to absorb much of the water before running off into our streams and rivers to come to Southern California. As a longtime resident of Calabasas, I have learned how thirsty our homes are. From outdoor irrigation to dish and clothes washing, to showering, cooking, and drinking, we use plenty of water. We simply turn on our faucets and there it is. But I have also learned that I, like many of us, can change. We all have made daily behavioral changes that has saved significant amounts of water over the last few years. And we have changed our outdoor gardening habits to use water-wise plants. Furthermore, we continue to remind ourselves that water is not a consumable. But is an asset and a resource that must be respected, conserved, and recycled. Which brings me back to why we do annual library book donations. If I'm donating, we are donating six books tonight to the Calabasas Public Library. Three of the six books presented today are focused towards young children. As an LVMWD Board Director, I have the unique perspective to see the excitement that our kids have about water. Through our poster contests, our collaboration in the fourth and fifth grade teachers. Our tours of the Pure Water Demonstration Facility and through this book collaborative. The other three books we're donating are youth and adult oriented. One is a futuristic spy novel and two are nonfiction books discussing the history and the future of California's complicated water issues. I encourage you all to read these books to yourself or to your children. The book donation provides all of us the opportunity to continue learning about how critical water is to our daily lives and how little of it there really is. I thank the City of Calabasas Library for its continued water education initiatives. Only two weeks ago on May 13, I enjoyed an online Calabasas Historical Society meeting hosted by the Calabasas Library. Where we got to hear our very own historian, Jack Feldman, speak on the history of water in Los Angeles, from the Chumash to the present day. On behalf of the entirety of the Los Virginus Municipal Water District, I want to thank you for your willingness to continue this collaborative effort. And for taking your time to allow me to share these books with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. And are you, are you going to convey the books? Do you have them there? You can hold up?
I believe they've already been delivered to the library.
Okay, great.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
We, we really appreciate our, our collaboration with the water district and everything you've done for us over the years. Been a good partner. Would anyone like to say anything? Yes, Mary Sue?
I just wanted to thank Linda for your service to not only our city, but the entire region by serving on the board. You bring a depth of knowledge and great ideas and it's much appreciated.
Alicia.
Complimentum rap Mauer.
Sorry.
I just want to say thank you for your service and thank you for the donation. It's always really nice having someone from the water district here, especially a resident. So thank you.
Thank you.
David.
I'll join in saying thank you very much for these wonderful donations and every year being here. And, and again, for your service on behalf of all of us, it's really, really important, especially in these times, to have a great partnership that we do with you. Thank you.
Okay, and Peter, do you have anything you'd like to say? No. Yes? No, okay.
Um, Mari. Saying thank you, and thank you again for the wise advice on saving water and the awareness of our current drought situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mari. I don't see anybody with their hands up from the audience.
Actually, yes, Mr. Mayor, Barbara Lockwood, our librarian, wants to say a few words.
I don't even see her, but I will, I, oh, that's because I'm not on attendees. Okay. Yes, let's bring Barbara Lockwood in.
Barbara, go ahead, please.
Yes, I just want to say thank you from the library. We really appreciate your donation every year.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you, council, so much, very much.
And we wish you good evening. We have a long night ahead of us. So you, you get, you get to go first. Yeah. Okay, we're going to move on to education grant checks to the PFC Presidents. And we, I'm going to call out the names who are here, and then I'm going to turn it over to our subcommittee members to introduce this item. We have Dawn Soudair, President of Bay Laurel Elementary, Natalie Klein, President of AC Still Middle School, Grace Fisher, Co-President, Chaparral Elementary. Julie Gould, President of Calabasas High School, and Ruth Ramirez, Ueda, sorry, Co-President of Loop and Hill Elementary. And Dr. Michael Roberts, Principal on behalf of PFC President of AE Wright Middle School. So all of those individuals are present with us. We can bring them into the room. And let me turn to both Alicia and David for comments and introduction as to what this item is.
So this item, each year, the city council provides a grant to the PFCs. And then the PFCs use that money to support the local schools. And this has been going on for many years. And every year we ask the PFCs to come share with us how this money was used to support the students. And even during the tough times of COVID, as a city council, we were thrilled to still be able to support our schools. It's, our schools are one of the true gems in our community. And I know unanimously, we all believe in public education and supporting our schools. So I look forward to hearing what the local PFCs did, and I'll turn it to David.
Before I turn, go to David, I apologize. I missed somebody. Kate Vadera from the Los Virginus Unified School District, on the Board of Directors. He's a trustee. I apologize, Kate. I didn't see that you were coming in until I glanced down. So, um, welcome to our meeting, David. Go ahead.
Thank you, and I'll be very brief because I want to hear from all the PFC, PTSA, and PTA Presidents, Vice Presidents, and Representatives, as well as our Board Member, Kate Vadera. I just want to say I'm so proud of our city and this council to continue to frankly be one of the only cities in the region to support in this manner. As we do and so much more. And it comes back tenfold. Our students are incredible. And they're going on and doing amazing things and they'll continue to do so. So thank you very much to this council for what they do.
Okay, and we can't present the checks or take pictures together unfortunately this year, but the thought is there. Let me call you one by one if you wish to make comments. First, we'll start with Board Member Kate Vadera. You just unmute yourself if you'd like to say something? Kate? There you are.
I would just, thank you so much. I would just like to thank the City of Calabasas on behalf of the Los Virginus Board of Education for your continued support of our schools and our community. And it means so much to us. And I know you make such a huge difference. So thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll have Dawn Soudair, Bay Laurel, next.
I don't see her, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, okay. I didn't see her on the grid. Okay, she's not here. We'll move to Natalie Klein.
James, I see the principal from Bay Laurel is on the call. I don't know.
Uh, okay.
What is, what is her name?
Dr. Duncan.
And let me allow her to speak.
If she wants to, I don't know. I just see her on the attendees.
Sorry, I, I just, it's hard to see all, I have lists here and online.
Hi, everyone. This is Dr. Jacqueline Duncan, Pro-Principal of Bay Laurel Elementary School. Thank you so much for having us here today. We greatly appreciate the city's support of our schools. And on behalf of Bay Laurel, thank you all very much. We really appreciate it.
Okay, so Natalie Klein is not here?
I'm here.
Wait, there you are. Okay, sorry, you're square moved. Sorry.
No, it's okay. There's plenty, there's lots of people. Well, on behalf of AC Still, we just want to say thank you so very much. Your funding this year was able to go towards our library and upgrading our, our system there. We help fund our afternoon tutoring program. And also, you know, we, we fund sections to reduce the class size. So we're really grateful and I can't thank you enough.
Thank you. Do we have Grace Fisher from Chaparral?
Hi, how are you?
Yes.
Thank you so much. My name is Grace Fisher. I am the co-president at Chaparral Elementary School. And we are so grateful for the generous support of this grant funding from the City of Calabasas. At Chaparral Elementary School, we have used the city grant funds to help supply educational materials throughout the pandemic. Such as our fabulous music program over Zoom. Additional hard copies of printed reading materials so that the children could spend some time away from their computers. With the amazing super science magazines and scholastic news publications. And also some capital improvements to our school campus. Chaparral, as you know, is one of the oldest schools in our district and is on the hottest side of Calabasas. The PFC, along with city support, was able to put in 13 new mature trees to provide shade for our children to play and to beautify the school and community. We also installed a new running track right as we came back onto campus to help jumpstart a new fitness program for our kids. As we look forward to next year, we will once again gratefully and politely request the support of the City of Calabasas. We are very much looking forward to the 2122 school year to get our schools and lives back to normal. But after the past year and a half our kids have had, we need your help to invigorate the youth of Calabasas. And prioritize their health, safety, and education. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Julie Gould, Calabasas High School.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm Julie Gould from Calabasas High School. I just wanted to echo what some of my fellow PFC Presidents have already stated. But for Calabasas, on behalf of the students, parents, faculty, and staff at Calabasas High School. We too would like to thank you for your generous, your generous support every year. Calabasas PFC works closely with the CHS Administration to prioritize school spending projects. And be sure to align them with our school site. And thanks to your generous grants, we're able to take ordinary programs and make them extraordinary. In the past, we have been able to use the grants on academic decathlon, Model UN, robotics, music, athletics. And to help fund our shop, schools have opportunities program with instructional materials for the classrooms. We've been able to offer scholarship programs. And science equipment and also a online streaming program for our athletic department. So we can't thank you enough for your support.
Thank you.
And I thank you again.
Okay, next we have Ruth Ramirez Ueda. I apologize if not pronouncing that right. Loop and Hill.
Hi, my name is Ruth and on behalf of Loop and Hill Elementary, we want to thank everyone, the City of Calabasas, for all the help that you've given us. In the past year, we use our funds to provide our PE and music specialists for the, for the school. We also provided school supplies for the students, including new iPads and, you know, educational supplies and funding for the science program. We've also funded the library. Thank you. Thank you for everything.
Thank you. And we also have Dr. Michael Roberts, Principal of AE Wright Middle School. There you are.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here. Just wanted to share on behalf of my PFC Presidents that couldn't be here. What we usually use the funds for every year is support in our media center. So we open up our media center before school and after school to give the kids an opportunity to come in and check books out, take their AR tests. And have a good, safe place to be there before school and after school. And we also use the funding to support some campus supervisors to help kids either after school, when they exit carpool loop. And during the school time for safety hours. So we really appreciate those opportunities. And this year, having that media center support was extremely helpful because we served as one of our district top spots to serve tech support. And so we had many kids coming in, trying to get help with their ACers throughout the year. So we're able to ramp up our services there a little bit there and support all the students in our community. And thank you for your support.
Thank you. Mari, are there any other people who showed up to speak at all?
No, Mr. Mayor, there's no other people wanting to speak.
Then I'm going to turn to my other council colleagues who are not on the subcommittee, but may wish to say something. Peter, why don't we go with you?
Well, thank you. Yes, I want to also thank all of you for coming out and sharing with us tonight what you have been doing with the funds. And it's obviously making a great impact to our city and to our schools and to the children that attend them. And I just want to let you know that I am completely in support of keeping this program going in the future. And it's going to be something that'll be in our budget considerations in the next month or so. So I encourage you all to pay attention to what we do as a city here and join us as we hopefully follow through with this next year.
Great. And Mary Sue?
Great. I wanted to thank all the parents and the administrators for the work you've done, especially this past year. I know it's been extraordinarily challenging. And it's hard to believe we're past it and, and we'll be entering some new normalcy. So thank you for the extra effort you put towards the school while managing children at home. And I want to say one thing, when we created this program years ago, it was to address a challenge that we had where parent associations and athletic associations from the schools and clubs and boosters all came to us asking to support us. And so we thought the best way to address all those needs was to come up with this lump sum of money. And to hear the wide variety of uses is exactly what we attended. And so I want to thank you all for following the spirit of the grants.
Thank you. And I too want to thank you all for coming. This is something the city does that I think sets us apart from many cities, if not all. And we're, as you know, over the years, there's never been any dissenting voices. We're very happy to do it. And we're, we hope you put the money to good use, and it sounds like you have. So I guess we'll see you next year for the next round. But you're welcome to come anytime to our meetings. Thank you very much. And Mari will take them off the panelists. And we'll move on to our next item, which is going to be a presentation by the American Public Works Association Project of the Year plaque. For the Malibu Hills Road Stormwater Enhancement Project. Want to welcome into the room, when we have a chance, Nadir Hadari from the APWA to make the presentation. And Robert Yalda, is he here? Should we let Robert in as well?
He's here, Mr. Mayor.
Let him in as well. He may wish to say something. Okay. Nadir, you're up.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and fellow councilmembers. Thank you for having me. My name is Nader Hadari. I'm the Deputy Public Works Director for the City of Thousand Oaks. But I'm also President-elect of the Ventura County, Ventura Chapter of the American Public Works Association, APWA. And I'm here on behalf of them tonight. APWA is a national organization with 30,000 professionals. With a common goal of improving the nation's infrastructure in communities all across the US. Our local Ventura chapter, which your city is a member of, has 300 members and one of the most active chapters in the country. We're celebrating National Public Works Week this month. And in doing so, we're presenting some of our key project of the year award winners to the respective agencies. So as such, I'm pleased to be here once again tonight with good news to present you, the City of Calabasas, with another project of the year award. Without further ado, I'd like to congratulate you, the Public Works Director, Robert Yalda, and Environmental Supervisor, Alex Farasadi. In accepting our 2020 Project of the Year Award in the environmental category for the Malibu Hills Road Stormwater Enhancement Project. This award highlights the focused efforts of the Calabasas Public Works Department and the City of Calabasas to improve the community. The Malibu Hills Stormwater Project improves the quality of life, not only for those in Calabasas, but even those beyond. Whether it's a safer or more attractive streetscape on Malibu Hills Road, or improved downstream creek watershed and beach water quality. This unique project benefits the region as a whole. It's clear this project was very successful as a strong lead, as a result of the strong leadership of the city council and the high-quality civil engineering and construction management efforts by your public works department. And I understand much of the project was designed, you know, in-house by staff, which is very impressive. So with that, I'd like to, once again, congratulate the City of Calabasas on receiving this environmental project of the year award. I have a digital replica of it here. The actual award is already in the possession of your, of your team. So with that, I'll turn it over.
We have the real thing.
Yeah.
Thank you, Nader, Mr. Mayor.
I want to thank Public Works. They always are working hard selecting the good project. And I'm proud of our hard work. Tatiana's here. She can hold the plaque. We have another one back up. So we take pride of what we do in Calabasas. And again, with support of city manager, you council, we are capable of doing projects that are unique, their model. And we're going to continue doing so. Again, Nader, thank you for making time, making this presentation, and we are very proud of receiving this award. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Very talented. We always appreciate our staff. Tatiana, I saw your hand up. Did you want to say something or would you just?
I just would like to add on behalf of Environmental Division Manager, Alex Farasadi, and the Public Works Staff who worked on the project. For recognizing this achievement and presenting this award, the Project of the Year to us. We will keep this plaque in the office to memorialize this achievement. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no other hands up from members of the public. Let me turn to the council. Anyone on the council wish to say anything other than what's been said? No? Oh, Peter.
Yes.
Sorry.
Yeah, I just would like to say, as a plumbing engineer, I understand what this project's all about. I think it'd be great if, Robert, you could share with us why we are trying to improve the quality of our stormwater runoff and reduce the quantity of our stormwater runoff and how this project achieves those things. Just so that the public understands the importance of this.
Peter, thank you. As you mentioned, the project consists of collecting when it rains, instead of the water going in a storm dryer. Storm drain, it will go to the medians of the street and be planted. And there is sufficient capacity, except when it's overflowed, then it will go to storm drain. With doing so, we are pretty much re-filterizing the water that comes and get either diluted through parking lots. Or street surface or sidewalks. And this natural way of removing contamination and letting it go in the underground water that really refuel our underground water system. Other than that is partially technical, but we were very pleased to be able to do that. And as mentioned, the project was designed in-house with the help of Dr. Farasadi, Tatiana, Alba, myself, and student interns that we hire. We take the pride of designing this type of project in-house and implementing it. And I think that's one of the reasons APWA likes to award us this type of plaques. And definitely use our design as a model for other cities. I hope that was good enough, Peter.
Perfect. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Going in order of hands, Mary Sue?
Robert, Tatiana, and I'm not sure if Alex is with us tonight, but this is one of many recognitions the Public Works Environmental Division has received. For innovative solutions to specifically stormwater runoff, not only capturing it so it doesn't run into the ocean and the creeks and we lose water. It contaminates those waterways, but finding ways to recharge our own groundwater. I'm so proud of our city in its decades-long effort to capture stormwater runoff. And thank you again.
Alicia?
I just wanted to say thank you and congratulations. And I actually completely understood your description of everything. So that was impressive. But thank you for this great work on this important topic.
David?
I'll also add my congratulations to Robert, Tatiana, Alex, and staff on this excellent award by the APWA. But you also, I think if I'm correct, this is the third Project of the Year Award in a row that we have received. So it is really a testament to the great work we do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. As I said, we appreciate your, your being here from the outside and for giving me award. I'm Robert and Tatiana, thank you for accepting. Okay, we're going to move along. To any other members of the public? I didn't see any other hands, Mari.
We don't have anyone, Mr. Mayor.
So we're going to go to council announcements. Why don't we start with Alicia?
Say just a few things. I have been made aware of a lot more rattlesnakes in our community this time of year. And they think it's just going to be a busy rattlesnake season, if that's what you call it. So just be aware when you are at our city parks, when you're on our trails, just keep an eye. So just be aware when you are at our city parks, when you're on our trails, just keep an eye out. Previously, when people would see a rattlesnake, they would call the fire department, but that might not be. That can still happen if you see a rattlesnake at your own home, but for our city parks, we have been told right now to just let them be. So just want to make sure that everyone is aware and stay safe and just be aware of your surroundings. And also, since we don't have another meeting before graduations, just want to congratulate all of the students in our community are graduating. What a year it's been through COVID, but I'm thrilled that people are graduating in person and that next year, hopefully. Well, actually, it will be, school will be open full-time and in person, but just congratulations to all of the resilient students and. The remarkable job that they did during this trying time.
We'll call you if there's any snake issues, you can.
Pass that right back to you.
Okay, Peter, you're next.
Thanks. I just want to take a moment and announce that our Chamber of Commerce is up and running and starting their in-person events again. On Thursday, June tenth at seven thirty AM, there'll be a networking meeting at Peddler's Fork. If you're interested in details, you can find out more at calabassaschamber.com. That's it, thank you.
David?
Thank you, and I just also want to add congratulations to all the culminating elementary, middle and high school and college students. Congratulations. Let's all. Keep our eyes out during, on the road, drive a little safer during this time as well. One thing coming up in about two and a half weeks, we are waiting. We continue to get good news with regard to COVID numbers and openings. I think we're all feeling a little more freedom as each day goes on. Hopefully in about two and a half weeks, we'll have even more things to. Be happy about and talk about. I know, I'm sure you're going to hear about some more tonight as well. I do want to mention a couple of things. On a, on a personal basis, a little serious for all of us. A year ago yesterday, George Floyd was murdered and we have all followed that. We have all been involved in our city and all over the world in protests and discussions about. Ways we can do better. In the past year, we've also seen, past fourteen months, especially we've seen an increase in. In hate crimes and, and attacks without a basis or without a purpose. We've seen anti-Asian crimes. Our council wrote and stood up against that and in recent weeks, we've seen an increase against Jewish people. Anti-Semitic attacks have been in public and restaurants all across the country. And I just want to say, I'm sure all of my colleagues, we condemn these acts of anti-Semitism. We condemn acts of hate against anyone. And I hope we can work to be better, less divided as a country, less divided with regard to any, whether it's race, religion or otherwise, and do better. And so I, I shared that comment. I want to wish this coming weekend, Happy Memorial Day and thank all those. Who have given the ultimate sacrifice for all of us to continue to support our, to have our freedoms that we enjoy each day and to all. All the men and women who have served and given that ultimate sacrifice, a huge thank you. And one last thing, Mr. Mayor, I know you're well, well aware of it and all of our colleagues, very good, very well-known. And longtime resident Calabasas passed away. His family informed me it was okay to say so today on April third, Harold Arkoff. Who was, again, one of those people who defended our rights as a military member in World War Two. I would ask, will you adjourn in memory at a later date in his memory? Thank you.
Take care of that. Mary Sue?
I just want to remind people that it's the time to get ready to evacuate, have your bags packed, be prepared for a wildfire season. The experts are saying it could be one of the worst. I want to also acknowledge the families of those. Military members who have died in service and want to thank them for their. Contribution. I do want to say something about the snakes at parks. Our city staff will relocate snakes. So if you happen to see one near a playground, they have the long poles and instruments to move them safely far away back into the hills. And then there are, the details aren't absolutely firm yet, but it appears as if we will be having a July fourth celebration. So mark your calendars and it'll be a great time to, to get together. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and now I get to chime in that we were just given the details today. I just got a flyer for the Fourth of July, so let me just tell you what the details are. We are having the Fourth of July Fireworks Spectacular. We're not having the relay races, the pet show or the summer splash party. Those will have to be deferred till next year. The fireworks spectacular will be at Calabasas High School on the football field as it's been in the past. There will be a reduced capacity as of now. Because of COVID, so we will have fewer tickets and so if you're interested in going, you need to purchase your tickets early. There'll be no. On-site ticket sales and we will sell out, I'm fairly certain. Gates will open at six. Concert starts at seven fifteen PM and fireworks at nine PM. There's free onsite parking, first come, first served. Tickets are ten dollars per person. Ticket purchasing for Calabasas residents begins June fourth. Non-residents begins June fourteenth. You may purchase your tickets at the Calabasas Tennis and Swim Center or Wan Danza Park. So we'll be publicizing that information starting on Friday and then we'll be, it'll be in the E-News on Tuesday. So just make sure you get that set if you want to go. We also are happy to announce that we will be bringing back our summer concert series. These are the free concerts on Calabasas Lake side. You can access the area at the parking lot at the Tennis and Swim Center. The gates will be open. They typically start at six o'clock. We have concerts on July eighteenth, Stone Soul. On August eighth, Yachty by Nature and August twenty ninth, Cash Killer and King. So those are your three concerts, they're free of charge. Those are all my announcements. Next, we are going on to oral communication and public comment. Now. Please raise your hands only if you're going to speak in general public comment, so we don't have to bring you in and find out you're going to speak on another item. Anyone who wishes to speak on an item not on the agenda will have three minutes or less to address the council on a subject matter. That's within the purview of the city council. So this is not for any specific item that's on the agenda. This is for something that is not on the agenda. If you want to speak on something on the agenda, please wait to raise your hand till later on, because we have no way of knowing without bringing you in. So with that, we'll turn to public comment. I have Joanne Sowara, followed by either Norma or Mark Citron. So we'll bring in Joanne.
Okay, hi, this is Joanne Sowara and I live in Calabasas. Yesterday, I attended a virtual town hall put on by Senator Henry Stern and the topic was prepare for the next fire. And it was supposed to last fifty minutes, but it went on for almost two hours and it's probably one of the most informative two hours I've ever spent. And I have to say, we're really so lucky to have Senator Stern represent us in Sacramento. He comes from Malibu, so he has firsthand knowledge about wildfires and what we have been through. But most of all, he's forward-thinking and has so many smart ideas for helping people who live here. He specifically talked about directly utilizing funds to help residents harden their homes. And I know that on your future agenda items, you have to discuss the use of the Woolsey Fire Settlement Funds. And I strongly believe that the remaining funds should be used for wild safety measures and not for anything else. And I hope the city will take Senator Stern's lead and use these funds and any other grants that are available. For programs that provide residents financial incentives to help them harden their homes and provide defensible space. And also yesterday, I saw that Fire Safety Councils play a large part in our neighboring cities' preparedness for wildfires. And I recently learned that Calabasas has no Fire Safety Councils. So I was thinking that perhaps the Public Safety Department could become the lead on that and help organize. Some Fire Safety Council Zones in the city. I am more than willing to become involved in any way that I can. To help facilitate the reimbursement program that you might hopefully set up for residents. And/or setting up Fire Safety Councils. I think with the support from you, we can make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Norma and Mark Citron? Name and city of residence? Yes?
Yes, this is Norma Citron and I live in Calabasas and Joanne stole everything I was going to say. I also attended the virtual meeting along with my husband Mark and I do want to say that putting together the. Fire Safe Council will be quite a challenge, but I think we're up to that challenge. We've taken on other challenges in the past and this is something that will really be a labor of love, because I think we can. Really make a difference in protecting Calabasas and educating people. Thank you very much for listening and. Joanne, thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other hands. I did see, I think it was Ally Matos. But if they lowered their hand, that means they're not going to speak in public comment for this, for just general public comment. Mari, do we know of anybody else who wants to speak in public?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we're going to close the public comment period and go on to the consent agenda. The way we're going to handle the consent agenda, because I anticipate there might be a number of different requests to take off and public comment. There's items one through eight. If you're a member of the public and you wish to speak on any item on consent, please raise your hand now. So that we can call on you first without, so we know that you're there rather than pass something and then find out that you want to speak on it. So if there's any item, one through eight, on our agenda, consent, please raise your hand now. Mari, do you see anybody?
No, no, Mr. Mayor, there's no hands up.
Okay, so I'm going to turn to the council. Would anybody like any of these items, one through eight, taken off the consent agenda? Peter, what items?
Yeah, I'd like to take off number two.
Peter would like to take off number two. Mary Sue?
Two and three, please.
Two and three. Any other council members wish to take off items? All right, I would like to take off item number eight. So may I have a motion to approve items one, four, five, six and seven, please? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Kraut?
Aye.
Councilmember Shapiro?
Yes.
Councilmember Weintraub? Mayor Potemaur?
Aye.
Mayor Wustaja?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, let's go in order, item number two. Two of you wanted that off, Peter and Mary Sue.
Could we bring Heather into the panel or is she able to respond or Robert?
Robert is then, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, Heather is more prepared to answer this question. Please let Heather in.
I don't see her.
I don't see Heather either.
Can we skip this and go into item eight and Robert, can you try to contact her?
Will do.
Thank you, and if, you know, we'll do our best, guys. Okay, we'll go to item eight, which is mine. I have a number of questions about this resolution. On the language, I've highlighted them here and I want to go through them very quickly. Most of these are for the city attorney. Uh, okay, Matt, do you have it in front of you?
Yes.
Okay, attachment A. Item number two. Is that language appropriate to have the consideration of all the public hearings from. The project, the projects in twenty nineteen, which was, which was voted down? Is that, is that what you meant to put in there?
It's all, the twenty nineteen public hearings were the same project. The twenty nineteen decision was the same, same project back and through, so that's why we, we listed all. Five public hearings held by the planning commission.
I see. Okay, uh, next, go to page two, section two, part one. It says, "The applicant new home company submitted an application on October seventeenth, twenty sixteen." So the twenty sixteen application was the one and started in twenty nineteen. That's the one you're referring to, correct?
Yes, the timeline that you may be thinking of is that the application for this project was submitted before. Or just about the same time as the Canyon Oaks project was moving.
I know that, I'm just, I, I, it's a similar question, I guess, so this needs to be in the resolution too, correct?
Correct, that, that is the date this application was submitted.
Then under section two, part two, the last sub number. Is six, dedication of approximately sixty-six acres as permanent open space. But I've seen this written many times. Is, is it not the case that that is already zoned as open space?
Correct, it is zoned as open space. The proposal included a dedication to conservation easement. So we could, dedication of a conservation easement for approx, add that in.
Yes, I would like that added in because, Tom, just give me a second, because I, I, I want to make it clear that that's not something that was converted from. Another zone into open space and that's not, doesn't read that way to a layman. Tom?
It's actually both. Sixty-one acres of those sixty-six are zoned open space now, so five acres would have been converted. To open space that wasn't already zoned open space.
What was it zoned?
Um, I believe the multifamily.
Okay. Well, I'll leave it to your discretion, Matt, whatever you suggest. It just is, it always confuses me because it, the mis, the misleading part, in my view, is. If you're reading it and you don't know, it looks like something's going from a higher level of development down to open space when. When I didn't, I didn't, wasn't aware it was sixty-one. I mean, if you think it's okay the way it is, I'll leave it that way, but.
My suggestion would be we add in the reference to conservation easement to capture the key component of the proposal.
Okay.
Was a conservation easement to be put on top. As we know, the zoning, the open space zoning is subject to change through voter approval. That was sort of the key point there, so I would recommend that last line, section two, sub two, read. And six, dedication of a conservation easement for approximately sixty-six acres, eighty-six percent of the site as permanent open space. That I think captures the point.
Okay, on page four. Item number nineteen. In reading all the run-up to this and having at the May twelfth, twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one city council meeting, the city council continued the matter to date certain in May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one. What's missing out of there is the city council opened the public hearing. Uh, you know, however you wish to phrase it, conducted part of the public hearing and then continued it. The way it reads now and in the preceding paragraphs. Made it look like we just simply continued the matter. I don't want that to be part of the record.
Yes, I think we can adjust item nineteen to account that the public hearing was opened, testimony was received. Then the council continued the matter.
Yes.
And I can double-check with the city clerk to get the number of folks who testified to be added.
Thirty-six.
Thank you, thirty-six at meeting number one.
Yes, um. Section three. On page five. In the bold part. Or somewhere in here, do we need to add that this was an OSDR? Or is that, is that not necessary?
That needn't be added in this section as it's covered, as it is stated in a couple of other sections.
Okay. Page six. Under A, the first paragraph. The city, in the middle of the paragraph, it says, "The city council finds that remedial grading at this scale, when combined with installation of. Permanent concrete drainage ditches, et cetera." I, I, I don't, I don't think that was the actual finding. I think it was, city council finds that remedial grading at this site. In addition to. Leaving it a broader, if you want to put and/or, or in addition to, it wasn't that. Because the council did not make a finding that either one of those individually would be okay.
Understood. I think the way to capture that would be council finds that remedial grading at this site. And installation of permanent concrete drainage ditches, et cetera, both constitute conversion of open space.
Okay. All right.
And then the rest as is.
Page seven. The first paragraph, the, um. I I, I, I appreciate all of the uh, detail that went into the evacuations uh, sites and a lot of council members mentioned that. What isn't mentioned here is the arterial, the, the other uh, streets. You talk about the one-on-one freeway, but you don't talk about the limited access from other alternatives to the one-on-one. Leading one to perhaps speculate that there could be alternatives. And I would put in somewhere of the one-on-one crowding in combination with limited access by others streets. Or some, I, not, I'm not doing it artfully, but you know what I mean? It's not in there.
Yeah, we can add that, um, something like the one-on-one freeway. There are, there are no alternatives that, viable alternatives that exist to the one-on-one freeway as the other available roads. Namely, Monroe Road and Mahaland that would exist to get folks out of this area are generally impossible in an evacuation situation, something like that.
I, I, I wouldn't even name the streets cuz our girl roads there too. I mean, I, they're just the limited, just I would mention the limitations of the other streets. To say other streets running through the city.
Yeah, that can be.
Efficient, um. On page nine. I think you, maybe somebody cut and pasted this, but it refers to the planning commission instead of the city council. I think what you meant to put in was the city council.
Yeah, the, um, the italicized language is a quote from the code here. The code says planning commission, but that authority is kicked up to the council when a project requires council approval. But the, the first non-italicized paragraph, I should note that, that the council standing into the planning commission makes the following findings. Um. So I will adjust that.
So when it says in the non-italicized first paragraph, planning commission, is that taken out? Is that what you're gonna do? Are you just gonna put in city council?
That should be city council.
Okay, so make that change, please. Um. Page ten. Um. Under finding C, I, I, um, I think that's a very awkward sentence. I didn't quite understand it. Can you take a look at it? It, it, it could be interpreted different ways and it, there's something either missing from it or grammatically not correct.
Yeah, I think the uh, first sentence there, two or three points were meant to be covered that got collapsed into one sentence. The site, the project, not the site, project requires significant gra, as proposed, requires significant grading within the landslide area that cannot be remediated. That project results in substantial environmental damage to the hillside.
Okay.
That damage includes, something like that. We can break it up into the concepts that are baked in there.
Okay, that would make it much more, by the way, I hate to be picky, but I did this every night throughout my college years, for which I was paid fifteen dollars a night. Um.
And I appreciate the, the close read on this one. As we know, this is a critical uh, project.
Okay, page ten, also under numeral three. It says planning commission in italics, but if I'm understanding your previous comment correctly, that was meant to be.
Correct, and that there too is a quote from the code.
On page eleven, under item E, the highlighted part, which I assume you meant to highlight, is that correct?
Yes, that is uh, item E is a quote from the code and that was highlighted because that's the finding that the council, staff recommends the council cannot make.
Does that need to be mentioned, OSDR? Is that?
Uh, yes, and I believe we did include that, although I'm scanning quickly.
I don't see it.
We'll add the OSDR point there. And I will note on the bottom of page eleven, there is a straight typo.
Yes, that's the next one I have.
Council hereby denies.
Right, not, it says for this, for these reasons, the planning commission recommends that the city council deny the proposed tentative track map. I think it shouldn't even include that. I think it should just say the city council denies.
That is correct. That is a straight typo from the prior version.
Okay, page twelve. Um, a minor point, uh, under item two, there's a formatting issue. Can you, can you look at that italicizing and just fix that so it looks?
Oh, yeah. Justification got off there.
By the way, I was docked five dollars for each error that I made not correcting those. So sometimes I would get nothing for doing the.
Right.
Um. Page fifteen, item B. The paragraph under item B, it says slows, which is something else. They're very, slows are very tasty, but I think you meant to say slopes. That's in the uh, sixth line from the, from the bottom.
Yes, that is correct.
All right, on page sixteen, um, second paragraph. Um, quite frankly, I found this to be, um, a, a little bit offensive that the, the, the line that says, "The city council concludes that, comma, notwithstanding the staff's recommendation otherwise, comma." I, I want the part that says notwithstanding the staff's recommendation otherwise to be taken out. It's irrelevant. The council made its decision. What the staff recommended or might or might not think, well, it's appreciated and we heard what it was is not part of the findings of the city council.
Certainly.
Um. And that is it for my edits.
Thank you.
So, uh, Peter, you're next. Your hands up.
Thank you, James. First of all, I have some documents in my office. I'd love to have you proofread if your rates are still the same. But I, I just wanna first echo, uh, what, uh, the mayor has recited as his understanding of our resolution is in complete agreement with what my understanding of it is. Um, but the point on uh, page six, uh, item A, the and/or question of grading and/or concrete drainage ditches. Uh, first of all, I think the correct word would be or because in either case, I would have an issue with it. And then, second of all, if we back up three sentences above it, you'd have almost the same wording. Where you say the two-point-four million cubic yards of fill and installation of permanent, permanent concrete drainage ditches. So as you correct the language there, I'd just say, let's carry consistency throughout that paragraph.
I would, uh, the, the or on the second part makes sense. The first one is describing, simply describing the project. That one, I'm not sure would be the two-point-four million cubic yard sentence. The, that, that's describing the project's components. I think that would be an and, remain and, but the point is well-taken on the lower part. The council's finding was clear that the OS, measure D and measure O require voter approval for either remedial grading in the open space or installation of permanent concrete drainage ditches and related drainage infrastructure. That point, I think, is best stated in two sentences. The council finds the remedial grading in the open space requires voter approval. Second sentence, council finds that installation of permanent concrete drainage, it just requires voter approval. Break it into two sentences. I think that, sounds like that would better capture the council's uh, finding.
Perfect. And then the last point I'd make is the questions of the planning commission in all of your statements, uh, just for the public. Our code reads that certain projects are approved by our community development director. Some projects of a higher uh, uh, decision-making need are elevated to the planning commission. And some projects that have a greater impact get elevated to the city council. And whichever the higher body is that's making a decision will make all of the decisions for that project. That's why what our city attorney here has is quotes from our code saying the planning commission may approve, yada, yada, yada. My suggestion is you copy the language from one of the later quotes and put in parentheses perhaps, uh, or the city attorney where appropriate, or the city council where appropriate. And keep the language that's in our code because that's, uh, I think really strengthens uh, what we're trying to state here and, uh, and I don't wanna misquote our code.
Reasonable, we can add the parenthetical that the council is taking that action and we'll add the citation. Uh, it'll be in seventeen sixty-four that governs that process that the highest authority takes the permit when something has multiple permits.
All right, that's it for me. Thank.
Would any other council member like to comment on this?
I, I would just like to say to Matt that I thought you did an excellent job in summarizing the very many uh, reasons why we made the decision we did and I wanna thank you.
Okay, there was a little garbling of your, uh, voice, um. Can you check your computer? I, I don't know. We could understand it, but it was a little bit funky. Um, anyone else? I, I, now that the, the public's heard our comments, I guess it would be appropriate for me to ask if there's any members of the public who wish to say anything before we vote on this item.
That would be in order.
I don't see any hands, but if you, anyone would like to say anything based on what they heard? Okay, then, um. Can we have a motion, please?
Make that motion.
To incorporate the changes?
Yeah, I'll move that we, uh, incorporate the changes that were just stated here. Uh, can we move for approval or do we need to see this again?
No, because the changes were gone through and are wordsmithing, the council can't approve it tonight.
Then I would, uh, I would move that we adopt resolution number two oh two one dash one seven three one with the changes noted.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, can we do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Kraut?
Aye.
Councilmember Shapiro?
Yes.
Councilmember Weintraub?
Yes.
Mayor Potemauer?
Aye.
Mayor Bostajan?
Aye.
Okay, carries five zero, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Now, do we have, oh, there's Heather. Hello, Heather. Um. Heather, we have two items for you. I think they're, that you're wanted on both two and three. Let's take two first, the questions you have for Heather. Peter and Mary Sue.
May I go first and test my microphone?
Yes, you're fine now.
Is it working better? Okay, thank you. And good evening, Heather. Thanks for joining us. Um, items two and three are contracts for landscaping services in different zones in the city. And recently, the state of California passed a law banning anti-coagulant rodenticides. And we used to have something in our contracts and, and we don't now. So I've been in touch with staff, kind of getting a sense of if it's possible to add something back to our service agreements um, related to suppressing rodent population and, um, restricting the use of anti-coagulant rodenticides. Um, before I, we get into that, Heather, I wanted to ask you about IPM's integrated pest management plans and whether or not HOAs, um, have them and/or their, or the landscape. Um, this landscape business that was selected creates them for HOAs. Um, what's the history there?
Okay, so, um, as far as the language goes for the anti-coagulants, uh, that bill passed and went to the floor in August and Newsom signed it. It was effective in January twenty-twenty-one. And so that law is, is present right now and it's for two years. And then the Department of Pesticide Regulations at the state level. And they have a committee will reevaluate it, but as far as what we see and what I'm hearing from some of my friends that are lobbyists, it's not gonna change. Um. It's not in the PSAs and we don't have it in the bidding specifications. Simply because we pretty much don't use anything with anti-coagulants. We mostly use trapping. Um, there's a few HOAs that have barn owls. Um, and then, or we, it depends on the landscaping. Um, other than that, uh, it's, it's a language that can be put in. Um, I would have to defer that to Matt to get the correct language. But it is a law and it started, um, it was passed and it became effective in twen, January. Um.
Okay. Thank you. So I would ask Matt, um, in future bidding, um, bidding material and as well as these professional service agreements that we're looking at this evening. Um, can we add a paragraph about the new law? Cuz I'll tell you, the HOA I li, I live in has anti-coagulant rodenticide um, traps. So, um, I've, I've a feeling there's not complete knowledge about this new law. Matt, is this possible?
Yes, the city council could certainly add a line to the two agreements in this, two items. Referring back to Food and Agricultural Code, section, uh, twelve nine seventy-eight point seven, which embodies the California Ecosystem Protection Act of twenty-twenty that bans four specified second-generation anti-coagulant rodenticides. And because it's state law, it doesn't impact the bidding rules and adding that, adding a line to that. Uh, and then we could, of course, add that and even be a bit broader and just ban all anti-coagulant rodenticides in the next round of bidding. But that'd be fine. I think the, the the language would be the contractor consultant agrees to abide by all provisions of Food and Agricultural Code, section, uh, twelve nine seventy-eight point seven.
And, and I would add one more thing, but Heather, I, I would like your opinion on this one. Um. Food sources are the major, one of the major reasons there are rodents. Um. And I think it would help HOAs if they had, in, uh, you know, uh, maybe a, a general some type of IPM to suppress the rodent population, just some information on how to do that. Um, I don't know if that could be included in, in the service agreements also to provide that to homeowners or if you think we could do that as a city. I, what do you think, Heather?
Um, some cities have it, some cities don't. Um. The cities that do have IPM programs, uh, they mandate it or they use the IPM programs on their properties. Um, they suggest it to be used on private properties, but there's not they do not, I guess you would say, like, police it on private properties or private homeowners associations which are gated. It's kind of up to each individual homeowner's association or that board of directors to move forward. Um, there are, I guess you would say templates, um, at the state level through DPR, but they're a little bit, um, I would say probably, uh, very specific to the point where it would almost be over, um, it would be almost too much to understand for some homeowners associations. They are more based on like forestry. Um, you know, more state and government properties, um, waterways, water districts. Uh, you, we can place an IPM program together, um. And most of the IPM programs, um, you know, that we use at the university level. I, I'm gonna just say at Cal Poly or UC Davis cuz that's where I went. Most of those programs, they've always been in existence. Um. So you can place something together and there's a lot of stuff online in the UC extension, uh, Riverside, UC, any of the use, well, the UC extension as a whole. Um, I use UC Davis cuz that's the one I'm most active in. Um, we have one online. Uh, the county agricultural department also has a format to help individual property owners, but you could also use it for a HOA as well or for a city. And then the largest thing is just implementing it and um, it's mostly education and trying to get the residents to understand the process or trying to get them to, um. I guess. I don't wanna say bad habits, but most people are accustomed to buying a certain product. And if you want to change the product, sometimes, uh, you have to work with them for a while to show them the benefits of that. So I think the larger thing would be the education on why to use IPM and how to go about doing it. They might not be on board at the beginning, but it might take a while, but usually hmm, in general, most people will catch on.
Okay.
Because IPM's been around for years. IPM's been around since nineteen forty-eight.
Yeah. Thank you for that, um, that explanation. I think for the purposes of two and three, um, Mayor Bostajan, I would recommend uh, what the city attorney has suggested, adding a line about AB seventeen eighty-eight and the restrictions on using anti-coagulant rodenticides. I noticed that the contracts were already signed by, um, uh, the, the vendors, so we may have, we might have to go back and have them review it and maybe talk to them, you know, in detail. And then maybe, um, I'll follow up with our city manager about IPMs for our facilities and our public parks. I believe we already have them and we don't allow.
We already do it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But, um, maybe we could talk further about, um, uh, the public edu- Yeah, yeah, yeah. But maybe we could talk further about the public education component of anticoagulant rodenticides. Thanks so much, Heather.
If the city attorney adds that language, make sure you do more than just the AB numbers and whatever, just you have to kind of explain a little bit for the contract. That's a good suggestion. Peter, you had your hand up as well.
Thank you. I had two questions for each of these, actually, that on, on item number three, we have separate quotes for services with electric leaf blowers and with gas powered leaf blowers. And I just want to clarify that which one of those are we picking?
If you look on the report, the one that is highlighted and starred, it says apparent low bidder with electrical leaf blowers on page three. We went with the electrical because I think it was in October or September, there was a group, a young lady, I, I think she represented a group from the high school or something. And, and was asking if we could look into it. And then I received some phone calls as well. And I believe Hidden Hills passed theirs not to use it on any city facilities and, or within Hidden Hills. And I spoke to a council member at Agora that I know and two council members at the city of Camarillo. And so because of that, we added that language and I added that in the bidding. And then when the numbers came in and there was such a small difference, I spoke to Robert and he said to move forward that it was, he thought that was a good idea and supported it. So that's how come we chose that. But I thought it was important to support the, that group of kid, that young lady in that group that came in, I think it was September, October to the public speaking.
Great choice. And I just want to reiterate here that the second lowest bidder, the price difference was about eight percent, but for the lowest bidder, the price difference was only one percent.
That's correct.
Glad to see that you bid those out separately. And I think that was a wise choice and certainly represents Calabas as well. For item number two, for those landscape services, did you bid out electric or gas or did we separate them for that?
I didn't separate that because those were private HOAs. And when I spoke to them in regards to that, their biggest concern was how to police that by their residents. It's something that they're possibly interested in and the only situation with that is probably more talking to the gated communities are, are looking at it. And we did discuss it with the contractor that was awarded the contract. And one of the options is, since the city is initiating it, or if they initiate it, we have asked the contractor, Calabasas Hill Shirley Greenberg, and she also represents her and Richard Sherman and Carrie Mulcher, what would be the price difference to go with those in those communities? So I think they are kind of waiting on the city's decision and usually those are two very active HOAs and they usually will follow suit.
Okay. Is there any way we can get an alternate price before we sign the contract that perhaps we could prorate if we adopted it at a later time? Something so that we can keep this process moving forward, but we don't get stuck in the event that we want to move towards electric leaf blowers later?
For the HOAs?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure that they would probably do that. I don't see why that would be a, I don't see why that would be an issue with them.
Right. I had one last question and it's regarding the bids. And first of all, I noticed in here that you went out and had ten companies looking at this, only three return bids. I was really shocked at the numbers. The, the second lowest bidder was double our low bidder and the next bidder was six times the cost, which tells me that either somebody didn't want to bid the job or there was something wrong with our RFP. Could you give us some insight as to why you think those numbers were spread and what we can do differently when we bid this out in a few years to get a little tighter run with the bids? Not that I'm not happy with our low bidder. He looks like a great number. You've done a great job, but the disparity is shocking.
The, some,
Yeah.
Some of the contractors are familiar with the residents and the demand. And some of it is by choice, some of it is within the scope. It will say certain amount of meetings and everyone knows that it's probably double or triple that. They see how I get treated as well as other contractors by some of the residents. And I think sometimes the pricing reflects that. And then I had some that just do not do a little bit. Some contractors said for this city, they just choose not to do a little bit. But they'll, they'll support, they, they will. If I ask them, because I've known them in the industry for so long, they will, they'll tell me as far as the RFP goes, what it was, two of the bidders that I was hoping would bid, they simply just could not get the bonding. They're just still not to, they're still just not big enough and they don't have the capital for what we require for liability. So that, that's.
Also would like to add that we do have a mandatory information period meeting and all the contractor, we always invite them and we had over nine companies showed up and they visit all the sites. And we do other RFP is very extensive, very clear. We use Willdan for the maps right away, introduce them to the areas. And also they all have access to the past better pricing and cost. And I was as surprised as you are, but as you know, the cost of the labor and some country were just hoping they will be the only better with whatever price they put in. And if they would have get the job, they didn't know Yalda and Heather would reject those kind of bids, but I believe you're very happy with what we have in hand. It's really a lot of work and I want to thank Heather publicly. She really handles this very well and we are looking forward for continuing keeping our beautiful, as is, we get a lot of compliment. I think Kindan Mick is getting all the emails that I get as a compliment. I immediately send them to him. So, but we will try to send them to council too. So we do have resident that compliment as much as they complain. Thank you.
Okay, if any other council members wish to make comments on these items? Any members of the public, Mari, that raised their hand during this period that you saw?
No, Mr. Mayor, there's no one.
Okay, we have a motion to approve items two and three then.
Still moved.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Kraut?
Aye.
Councilmember Weintraub?
Aye.
Councilmember Shapiro?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Mauer?
Aye.
Mayor Bosadja?
Aye.
Carrie Spexer.
Moving on to new business, we have item number nine. This is a public meeting regarding landscape maintenance district number twenty two and Landscape Lighting Act Districts number twenty two, twenty four, twenty seven, and twenty three and assessment proceedings. Robert and/or Heather?
Well, Mr. Mayor, member of council, this is typical via law, public to make comment on this assessment. Engineer report is prepared. This is a period that public can make any comment they have about our assessment district.
Okay.
Given that I did not receive any other calls or question on this matter.
Any members of the public wishing to speak should raise their hands. And I do not see anybody. Mari?
Do not see anyone, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, then any council members wish to make comments? And no actions needed on this item, correct, Matthew?
Yes, that is correct. This is a public meeting. The action will follow at a subsequent meeting. Thank you.
Wish all the items were this quick. We'll move on to item number ten, Sheriff's Crime Report for April twenty twenty one. Deputy Mason De Mateo, if we could bring him in, please. Here, there he is, Deputy De Mateo. You're muted and can't see you. There you go.
All right, how about now?
Yes.
Perfect. Good evening. Thank you for having me. I am Deputy De Mateo with the Los Angeles Sheriff's Station. I have the crime report for April of twenty twenty one. So let's get right into it. We had for the month, one armed robbery. This was an incident that took place at a hotel at around two thirty in the morning, where a victim was pistol whipped and personal property was taken. We had two strong arm robberies. One incident took, took place in a parking lot of a grocery store. At around one thirty in the afternoon, a victim was assaulted by two individuals who were known to the victim and property was taken. The other strong arm robbery occurred at a grocery store again. And this was also around one fifteen in the afternoon, where the suspect stole food and assaulted workers at the grocery store in an attempt to escape. We had one assault and this incident occurred at a shopping center in Calabasas. An individual pointed a knife at the victim in a threatening manner and was arrested a short time later. I think that incident had to do with mental health, so hopefully that person's getting the treatment they need. We had one residential burglary, two burglaries to a business, three burglaries from locked vehicles. And then theft is up, which is a main reason as to why the crime rates for this crime report or crime stats is up. So we had three grand thefts, five petty thefts, three thefts from unlocked vehicles. We had two stolen vehicles. One was a high end sports car. And the other one was an older model truck. We had and one domestic violence felony. So there was a total of twenty one, or excuse me, twenty five part one crimes with an increase of twenty five point nine percent. Again, a major reason as to that increases because of theft. Any questions or comments?
You amended the report after it was posted?
Yeah, so the original, the original crime report that was posted on the city's website showed that there was an alleged rape. However, this was, when I was trying to find out more information about that incident, I found out that it actually occurred in Agora Hills. So the stat has been taken off of the crime report for Calabasas and should reflect so.
Okay, any questions or comments from members of the council? All right.
Esther, thank you for everything that you're doing.
Thank you.
We do appreciate everything you do, Mason. We really do. We're glad to have you. We're lucky to have you. And we hope that you're not whisked away to another station as so often happens when someone shines. So anyhow, thank you very much for coming tonight and waiting.
Thank you.
Take care. It's been requested that we take a break. We've been going an hour and a half and an hour before that in closed session. So we will take a ten minute break and come back with the Chamber of Commerce. Mari, when we come back, can you arrange for Bridget Carl to be in the panelist room?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Okay. Do we have everybody here? Let me see.
It looks like we do, Mr. Mayor.
You see me? I see you now. Well, I see your picture.
Yeah, that's okay. That's what I'm eating.
Okay. All right, we have everybody here. We're going to start. Welcome back to our city council meeting. And we're going to move on. Item number eleven is a request from the Calabasas Chamber of Commerce for stimulus funds. We have with us today Bridget Carl, who's the president and CEO of the Calabasas Chamber of Commerce. Bridget, maybe you can unmute yourself. I can introduce this item, or you can go first. Which would you like?
Whatever you prefer, Mayor.
Okay, basically, I'll give a brief introduction. I'll let Bridget speak, and then I'll, I'll have some additional comments, and then we'll go to the council. Peter Kraut is also on the subcommittee for the Chamber of Commerce, and he's going to comment too on this. So we have this request from the Chamber of Commerce for the use of some of the stimulus funds. Peter Kraut and I met with Bridget Carl, Kenan Meek, and other members of the Chamber of Commerce Board to go over their requests, to go over their budget, some of their shortfalls during the last year or two related to COVID, and some of their projected shortfalls in the near future. And we came up with a funding amount. But I want Bridget to go over some of the chamber's needs and some of her report first. We're not going to time this. And then after she's done, I'll comment, Peter will comment, the rest of the council, and then we'll, we'll hear from the public too. So if you are a member of the public and want to speak on this item, you can raise your hand at any time, just to keep your place in, so we know you're ready to speak. Bridget, why don't you go ahead?
Okay, well, sorry, my printer is printing right now. I had a prepared comment that I wanted to read, if that's okay. So we are asking for the stimulus funding from the city that you received from the federal government to help restart the chamber. And based on that, you know, first, we'd like to thank you for your continued support and for allowing us to submit a request for stimulus funding. We value the relationship we have with the city, city council, and our local businesses. At the start of COVID, the Calabasas Chamber was primary resource for businesses, organizations, and the community by providing information from local state, federal governments on financial relief possibilities, public health guidelines, webinar facilitation for critical information, and served as a sounding board for concerned businesses and their owners. Our function was to advocate for the survival of city businesses throughout the pandemic by creating an environment which they could continue to prosper during a very challenging time. For the businesses forced to close because of public health protocols, the chamber provided free advertising, takeout from restaurants, curbside pickup, e-commerce, online sales for retailers, pop-up markets at each shopping center at the city to boost holiday sales. The chamber also promoted business on social media outlets, including Facebook, Boost, Twitter, Instagram, LinkedIn, and the city and chamber website. For the open businesses during the pandemic, the chamber also offered free advertising because they were experiencing a decrease in sales. At that time, the community believed all businesses were closed except for grocers. The chamber is always grateful for the city's support, but this is a different time with urgency that requires a different measure of support. As so many small businesses, the Calabasas Chamber has experienced financial hardship because of COVID-19, and we were not immune. Moving forward, we recognize we are not our grandfather's chamber, and we need to pivot to provide the best advocacy for businesses and city government. I would suggest that all programs operated by the chamber need to be mission-focused, need to be mission-focused and aligned with the needs of the business community and residential community who serve. There are many tools available to determine the needs of the community, surveys, focus groups, ambassadors, and it is incumbent upon the chamber executives to ensure our programming is relevant and that our organizations are service-driven. I also recommend for future, an advisory council that includes chamber board executives, city staff, community members, meet as a lead community effort to rebrand the economic efforts of our city. This economic development program would emphasize our community as places to do business. This is things that I wanted to propose moving forward, but we can go through that if anybody has any questions. But mostly, I want to thank the city for allowing us this opportunity to submit a request for funding. And we hope that, you know, we can partner with the city and, you know, provide a better or a more successful economic development for our businesses and the residents of the community.
Thank you. I think I'll just briefly state what Peter and I did, then we can turn to public comment and the council questions. That'd probably be easier to hear the public comment first. First, Mari, I neglected if Michael McConville, I know he participated in some of this. If you want to bring him in, in case there's any issues or questions that come up. And also, is there a reason Bridget's not visible? Is that by choice, or is that one of our things that we didn't bring her in as a panelist?
It's by choice.
Okay, by choice. Okay, just, just asking. Because we had that, I only ask because we had that issue and someone complained last time. So I want to make sure we don't neglect anyone this time. Sorry, Michael. Michael, did you have anything you wanted to add before I go on? I know you worked a little bit on this, or you can just answer questions if you're available. Okay, so let me just briefly go over before we turn to Peter and then public comment. We met, Peter and I came up with the following recommendations. For fiscal year 2021, 22, we give the Chamber of Commerce $100,000 out of the stimulus monies. For fiscal year 2022, 23, that we give $50,000 of stimulus money. And as you might remember, we're getting half now from the government and half next year. In exchange, the Chamber of Commerce would agree to the following. All provisions of the current contract remain in full force and effect. The chamber will provide the city with documents evidencing the use of the monies for the purposes designated. And the amounts that we're giving can specifically only be used for lawful purposes under the stimulus bill's provisions. The chambers to provide the city council with annual year-end reports regarding what the chamber has done for the relevant year. The chambers to provide the city council with quarterly status reports regarding its past activities and planned future ones. To the best of its ability, the chambers to implement a program whereby the city receives timely notices of businesses entering or exiting the city. And to the best of its ability, the chambers to devise strategies to bring new businesses into existing empty commercial locations. So those are the, those are the items we can add or subtract, but those are our joint recommendations. Peter, did you have anything else to add before we turn to public comment?
Recommendations are just as we agreed, James, and thank you for summarizing those. I also just want to point out as well that the stimulus funds are specifically to help cities counteract the economic impact of COVID-19. And I think I certainly see the Calabasas Chamber of Commerce as a victim of COVID-19. I want to remind everybody that when we had our PPE grants, that the Chamber of Commerce is the one who administered all of that for us, or helped our staff run that program. And they did not receive any assistance out of that program. They just gave them their time. At this point in time, the Chamber of Commerce has dwindled down in staff to just their CEO, Bridget, and she does need support staff to start providing the level of services that they used to provide in the past. And they currently don't have an office, and they need a place where they can meet with stakeholders. And I think the last item that James mentioned on our list is most important to me, is that I'd like to see the Chamber of Commerce up and going again so that they can help us fill these empty storefronts. And the Chamber of Commerce plays a vital role in that. And I, I think it's a worthy place for us to spend some of our stimulus money. And with that, I'll turn it over to the rest of my colleagues.
Well, actually, this is the staff report. It's not our comments yet, quite. So we're going to turn to the public. I only have two hands up. So if you're, if you want to speak on this item, we're going to close a public hearing after we're done with the last speaker. So I'll call you one by one. Please, your name, your city of residence, or if you're a business owner, as I know some of you might be, or part of the chamber, you can mention that too. We'll start with Ally Matos, followed by Mike McNutt.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Ally Matos, and I'm actually a grad student at Pepperdine, and I'm an employee at Salon Nuvo. I am here representing Rachel Harrison, who's the founder and CEO of Salon Nuvo, located off the 101 in Lost Hills here in Calabasas. She's also a board member of the Calabasas Chamber of Commerce. On July 17th, we'll celebrate our 10th anniversary of the day that we opened our doors to the beautiful community of Calabasas and the surrounding cities. We're proud and honored to serve this city and employ 11 people. We are also pleased to be in the Calabasas Green Business Program as a 95% waste-free salon. I'm here to speak to the testament of our business community and the Calabasas Chamber of Commerce. Through our time in the Summit Shopping Center, we have worked closely to cross-pollinate with other businesses alongside the help of the Chamber of Commerce. We have made friends and helped one another, and never was this more prevalent than in this last year through the COVID-19 pandemic. As a board member, I called businesses to help spread various options available to help. I heard firsthand the stories and hardships of other business owners and the triumphs that we all overcame. The Calabasas Chamber and CEO Bridget Carl did a fantastic job communicating the latest federal assistance, state, county, and even city funding available to us. We needed all the help that we could get, and she was a vital asset in connecting the business community with funding that could save their business, including the grant program that was a massive boost in our morale and helped many of us get through these hard times. Before last year, the chamber has been an asset in helping my business communicate the need for signage at the summit and securing more visibility for my small business. I've made countless friendships and was able to immerse Salon Nuvo into the community through the pumpkin festival, wine tasting events, and numerous community events leading to more customers and growth in my small business. I urge you all to see the asset that the Calabasas Chamber is to the city and of all the small businesses in Calabasas and surrounding areas. I believe funding from the city would go to good use and help our small businesses get back on their feet again and prosper in the coming years. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I see Kenan's hand up, so we'll go to him. But first, I've neglected to mention that tonight, we're going to hear from the public, provide direction to staff, and then on June 23rd, which is our next council meeting, because we're not having one, we're only having one in June. This will, assuming something is approved in concept, the final version will be approved for the appropriation on consent in June. So Kenan, go ahead.
Yes, Mayor, council members, I appreciate the report by Bridget Carl and the time that she took to meet with us as staff and as council members. One thing that I'd like to recommend to the council before we make a final decision on this item and also on the discussion that will follow under item number 12, is that we look at overall the stimulus funds and what they can be used for. Best practices in municipal finances would suggest that we would look at the allocation as a whole and then set a plan of how we would want to spend that. I think we can look at some options tonight and consider different possibilities for those fundings. But again, the best practices would be to look at the funding as a whole and consider lost revenues, infrastructure projects, and other needs by the city, and then set a plan to allocate some of these funds to the chamber, to other entities or their needs, but look at it as an entire picture instead of piecemealing it together. So that's all I wanted to recommend, counsel, on that.
Okay, we'll pass in Mike McNutt, followed by Mark Miller. Mike, you're in.
All right, very good. Well, first, good evening, Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem, City Council and City Manager. Again, my name is Mike McNutt. I am the Public Affairs Communications Manager, Los Virgin, this is Water District, and the Chair of the Board of the Calabasas Chamber. I want to express my gratitude and appreciation for the city's continued support of the chamber and all the businesses that comprise our local economy. Chambers are a unique and vital organization that provides much-needed advocacy for local businesses. We act as a hub for information, funding sources, marketing, advertising needs, networking events, fundraisers, highlight local accomplishments of businesses, schools, and residents, while serving as a liaison between the local economy and the city. We have been here since 1955, providing the same opportunities as we always have. We have evolved by bringing in new technology to meet the needs of businesses. We are constantly tuned in to understanding current economic and social trends. We are focused on growing the local economy. We're continually reassessing by shifting and adapting outreach activities to meet the current needs of the community and always embodying the spirit of this great community. When the city was formed, we were here as your partner. We helped make this community one of the best places to live, work, and play. As our partnership continues to strengthen and the desire to shop and buy locally grows, the connection between us becomes more critical to our local economy's long-term success. As we speak right now, this community is recognized all over the world. It is a destination spot, and it has its allure. All of us embody this Calabasas spirit and this longstanding partnership that has helped create that. At the start of the COVID-19 pandemic, the chamber was forced to pivot, serving in a new and functional capacity. It was not about events, networking, and advertising. It was about survival for our businesses and ourselves. We positioned ourselves as a primary resource for businesses, organizations, and the community, providing information from local state and federal governments. We provided regular updates to businesses, members, and non-members from the public health, from LA Public Health and COVID-19 protocols, and tier levels met for indoor and outdoor capacity for businesses and operations. We helped several businesses with unemployment and PPP applications when uncertainty and fear filled their hearts and minds of the many business owners. We acted as both a professional resource and compassionate and empathetic resource for our local business community. They needed someone to tell them there was still hope and that they can do this. We did not just do our job. We legitimately care, and that is what makes this chamber so unique. And with that, I respectfully ask the council for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Miller, followed by Mark Levinson.
Hello. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, the City Council, and City Manager. My name is Mark Miller. I'm the President and Chief Executive Officer at West Hills Hospital, as well as a very proud board member of the Calabasas Chamber of Commerce. Similar to some of the comments that have already been made, I really just want to highlight the importance of the ongoing partnership between the city and the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber of Commerce really being a vehicle to help support businesses and really going back to years and years of support, but most recently, former Mayor Weintraub and partnering with the City Council as well as the chamber to create the Calabasas Open Small Business Grant Program, which provided those one-time up to $10,000 worth of grants to help businesses that were forced to close as a result of the pandemic. And through that, providing those funds to be able to reopen in a timely fashion, or quite honestly, just to be able to sustain themselves. That transition into being able to offer PPE, which is, you know, how quickly we forget, was such a scarce commodity and was required for not only the hospital, but for all these businesses to reopen. but for all these businesses to reopen. It was that partnership between the Chamber and the city that allowed the businesses to have access to that critical resource. So just a great example of the empathy of the community, mixed with some some business savvy that created a unique opportunity to help businesses survive and moving forward thrive. From a very personal note, I'd just say 2020, in my role here at the hospital, was incredibly humbling and incredibly honoring. I was in a unique position to be at the front lines and, you know, have the fears and the anxieties, but then look up and see the support of the Calabasas community right there, supporting our hospitals, supporting our healthcare workers, knowing that some of those very businesses that were supporting us were struggling in their own right. And in my my role as a board member for the Chamber of Commerce, I was honored to know that in partnership with the city, we were in turn helping those small businesses and those business owners that were helping us. They were in need, but they were still willing to help and serve us in our time of need. And I think it is truly because of the partnership. So I appreciate the time tonight and really hope that you all consider continuing to invest in this partnership and improving the funding. So thank you.
Thank you. Mark Levinson, followed by Mary Atherton. Mark here. There you are, Mark. Okay.
Now?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, great. Then I'll start quickly over. Wanted to thank the Mayor, Mayor Protem, and Council members for the opportunity to speak and for all the city has done with the Chamber over many years. I was, I live in Los Angeles. I was Chairman of the Board for two years. And I just have a quick observation that the Chamber is also involved in community events. One of our premier events every year is a fundraiser which provides scholarships for students at schools throughout Calabasas. Education is incredibly important. I'm a member of the Education Committee, which has members from all the schools in the area. I think that is simply an example of how the Chamber, at no particular benefit to itself, reaches out to the community to help those that are younger, our future leaders. So again, I wish that the council consider carefully our request for funds, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Mary Atherton, followed by Mike Pashai. Hello, Mary.
Thank you very, very much. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Good evening. Good evening to you, Mr. Mayor and Ms. Mayor Protem, as well as to the City Council and the City Manager. I am Mary Atherton. I'm the Communications Director for the Wella Company. You may have known us as Cody Professional. And I represent our 400 employees in Calabasas. I'm also a member of the Board of Directors for the Chamber. As you know better than anyone, the pandemic year put tremendous stress on our community, including the business community. And businesses that had been formerly thriving found themselves without customers and without a clear path forward to survive, let alone to thrive. But as the pandemic unfolded, the Chamber offered a path forward, notably with education that helped our business owners cut through the clutter to get the kind of support they needed. The Chamber held informational sessions open to all Calabasas businesses, not just Chamber members. Let me give you a couple of examples. Under the Chamber's sponsorship, Congressman Ted Lou explained and answered questions on the CARES Act. 110 small businesses attended. Senator Henry Stern held a leaders forum. Assembly Member Jesse Gabriel shared solutions for small businesses, as well as a webinar on tenant landlord eviction issues, along with Dana Pratt from LA County Housing and with Beth Tidzek, who provided free legal support for Calabasas business tenants. The Chamber offered our businesses a survival lifeline. As the pandemic continued, the Chamber provided services to any business that needed help regardless of membership. The Chamber offered guidance on filing for PPE for unemployment grants and SBA loans with free online advertising, email blast, promotions, and campaigns to keep businesses connected. My employer, Wella, benefited greatly from the Chamber's guidance as we prepared our workforce to return safely to our Calabasas headquarters. I respectfully ask you for your support. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening.
Thank you. Next is Mike Pashai, followed by Iris Stone. And Iris is the last speaker I have, so we're going to close the public hearing after that. If you want to get your hand up, please do so. Mike? You're muted, Mike. Mike?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, now I can.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council Members and all the other participants. And I am owner broker of a local real estate company called Allview Realty, and I'm also a board member of the Chamber of Commerce. As a local business owner and a long-term resident of Calabasas, I value the Chamber, what actually what the Chamber provides to our local business communities. They champion and embody the spirit of this community and promote all of us throughout the community and the region. Without them, our local economy would not be what it is today. And, you know, I've been involved in different activities in the Chamber, and I know that we really, they really put 200% of time and efforts into everything, and I respectfully ask the council for your support to help to continue the endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know what happened, but Iris Stone, did she want to speak? Her hand is no longer up.
I think she lowered her hand, Mr. Mayor.
Her hand, okay.
No, there she is. There she goes again.
I don't know what happened. Iris, why don't we just bring her in? It looks like there's a malfunction of some type. And she'll be followed by Stephen Weiss. Iris? You need to unmute yourself, Iris?
Good evening, Mayor Bazagian, Mayor Protem Mora, Mora, City Council and City Manager. My name is Iris Stone. I'm the owner and Doctor of Audiology at Hear Clear. It's a business in Calabasas. I also live in Calabasas and I'm on the Board of Directors of the Chamber of Commerce. If we can take a moment to look back at our partnership and the events we partnered on, it becomes apparent how well we, the city and the Chamber, work together. The Pumpkin Festival has been a successful partnership since 2007. Our other rewarding collaborations have been the wine tasting, the mayor's luncheons and dinner, the State of the City Addresses, Dodger Day, and we'll never forget the joy of hosting the Special Olympics and World Games, the Great Britain team. Certainly not to exclude the many new store openings, ribbon cuttings, and networking events. This continued partnership couldn't have been more critical than this past year with the Calabasas Open Small Business Grant Program. The Chamber visited in-person local business owners who were eligible for the grant and made sure they were still operating. It served as a twofold endeavor to make the owners aware of the grant program and assist them with navigating the grant process. Not only did the Chamber CEO Bridget Carl spend countless hours assisting all the local businesses, providing them with expert advice, guidance, reassurance, but most importantly, her time and just being present always. For many businesses, this was the darkest and most terrifying moment in time. What was going to happen? What would happen to, I lose my income or what about my family? I was one of those businesses. The fact that someone was there helping, providing hope and encouragement that legitimately cared about them is priceless. But this shouldn't come as a surprise to anyone, as this is the standard course of action that sets this community, Calabasas, where I live, apart from the others and, of course, our Chamber of Commerce. The city didn't have all the resources to communicate with businesses and the Chamber was there to help. We served as the liaison between the efforts to help and those that needed the help. Investing in the Chamber is a direct investment in our local economy and a reinvestment into the city, the businesses, and the residents. I respectfully ask the council for your support. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Iris. Bring in Stephen Weiss and then I don't have any other speakers, so once he's done, if there's no other hands that pop up, I'm going to close the public comment. So Stephen, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and city staff. I'm going to address a couple of things here. First of all, the gratitude that the businesses had as we reached out to them and talked to them about their situations, the grant money that came forward from the city. And I don't know how much you were able to interface with them over the past year, but you cannot imagine that the gratitude they had when we talked to them and about how the city came through. And I want to talk personally to echo like first what Mark had said about the education. I work in Calabasas and I live in Calabasas adjacent, which is also known as Woodland Hills. My son personally, you know, was able to go to school at Calabasas High and benefited from it. From that, you know, I got involved with the Chamber even more directly. And for me being not a resident of Calabasas, but being at the events and in the town, it is a very unique place. I was touched on that and the Chamber is part of bringing all that together. So my personal gratitude, but I just wanted to relay what the community was saying and how we've been able, you know, tackle what they said about interfacing with the community. It is so important that we're able to go forward. And I can tell you from our standpoint as a Board of Directors and as a Chamber, we will be very much in gratitude to you guys when you come through with the grant. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Last call for public comment. Mari, do you see anybody?
No, Mr. Mayor, there's no one else.
I'm closing the public comment portion of the meeting. We'll turn to council members who did not get to speak earlier first. Who would like to speak? Anybody? We have Mary Sue, Alicia, and David. Any of you? Mary Sue, yes.
I'll speak. Oh, I'll go after Mary Sue.
But your voice is garbling again. I can't understand you.
Is this any better?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, my apologies. I don't know what problems I'm having. I want to first off, start by saying thank you. A real heartfelt thank you to CEO Bridget Carl of the Calabasas Chamber of Commerce and to the board who supported her, but it was heroic, the amount of work you did getting information to businesses in such an uncertain and frightening time and working closely with then-Mayor Alicia Weintraub on an innovative, quick grant program to help with PPE. I can't thank you enough for that. It's very clear that the city and the Chamber have a longstanding, very productive, very respectful synergistic relationship, and I think it's important that we continue that. I do want to say that prior to COVID, I think there were some discussions. I had some discussions with people about not only the Calabasas Chamber, but traditional chambers like the Calabasas Chamber were starting to become more obsolete as the internet and web-based businesses started taking hold. And it was a nimbler, different kind of business model. And I think this is a superb time with a very talented and capable board that you have, Bridget, that you take the opportunity to reset and look at how we can use our new technology to be as nimble as today's business in getting messages out and connecting residents with businesses, businesses to businesses. And you and I have explored at least one option of a, an innovative new business that encourages other businesses to purchase from each other and residents to do the same thing. So putting shopping locally to a whole new meaning. And so I'm really excited about that aspect. So I did not see a business plan here. I believe the amount of money and Mayor Bazagian, can you correct me? The original amount of money that you asked for was 200,000?
No.
No, what is the amount?
We just, we just asked them what they were, what their deficit was, their projected deficit was. That was, that was just a relay of that information.
Okay, that's helpful to know because it's really not clear. So what you're proposing is that we help them with an upcoming deficit or current deficit?
Well, I'll let Bridget answer that, but it's basically, I think, a little bit of a combination of both accumulated debt. Like, for example, they had to let go their staff. So I don't know whether you're going to count that as past deficit or future ones are going to have to rehire them. They don't have an office anymore. But Bridget, why, she's better equipped to answer these questions.
Sure. So as what the mayor said, it is a twofold situation. We did our projections and based on current trends as of today, April, when we put it together, this is where we were headed. If nothing else happened, we had lost quite a bit of money based on our events. We are 40/60 Chamber, 40% membership, 50% event. So not having an event through 18 months really damaged our revenue. So what we did then was do catch-ups with PPP, SBA. We ourselves were applying for all those loans and grants to make sure that we were going to be sustainable. Just to, I do have one part timer. She works 32 hours, 16 hours a week. So, but she is doing the work of connecting with members, you know, making sure memberships are secured. But as far as the projections, it is what we are, it's our prospect of where we are going to be if nothing else comes in. So the funding would absolutely support us to restart. We can get things off the ground immediately, working with the businesses. I don't see us going into a business and saying we are going to ask you for sponsorship and so forth. We want to get through these next few months where we can support the businesses in a, you know, productive way and get the economy going again in this, in the city. So that's how it was laid out. If you want a detailed business plan for, I'm happy to do that. The X, you know, the program that we sent you, again, was a forecast of where we were at.
That's helpful. Thank you very much. I guess my last comment is the city manager's recommendation about kind of looking at the variety of options and needs in the city and how we can best address the economic downturn with our stimulus funds in total. And I really like that idea. I think if we waited a bit, the Chamber could take some time, and it's a very talented board, to reset and actually give more specifics about what it is you would do. I wouldn't want to micromanage the amount that you would get. If you really think you need a storefront and you want to put all that money towards a storefront, I'm not going to second guess that, but if you're going to lean towards more technology and modern connecting, you might not need a storefront. So I, but but overall, I would like to wait and look at all requests or ideas or needs that we've identified in the city for stimulus money. But I certainly support a continued partnership, robust partnership between the city and the Chamber. Thank you.
Alicia?
Hi, thank you. So I wanted to thank the Chamber for everything that they did the last year. I mean, there, the list goes on and on. Because of the Brown Act, and I didn't know who discussed this with who, I didn't speak to any of my colleagues, but I spoke to Kindon. And my, just my question is, and this really has nothing to do with the Chamber, but my big issue is wanting to understand where we're planning to spend our stimulus funds. What our outlook, what our plan is. You know, we're going to, normally, we don't take like unsolicited requests like this, to my knowledge. So who else now is going to be making these asks and where, as a council, are our priorities? Obviously, the Chamber is one of them. And everything they're asking for makes sense, but are we going to have individual businesses that need rescue? So it's hard for me to like look at this just as an So it's hard for me to like, look at this just as an isolated instance without seeing like the big picture. We're getting what 4.4 million? Is that the amount?
In two installments.
So, okay, right. But then where are we, how are we allocating that money? Like what are our priorities for spending that money?
There were two, there were two immediate requests based on immediate needs. One was from the chamber and one was from the hazard pay, and those are before you tonight. After that.
But I'm saying that like the hazard pay came to us through emails from residents and then it came through as like a request from a council member and then a second. You know, I just feel like a lot of people in our community wouldn't even know that they could write a letter and get letters of support. So I just, I want to look at this like big picture that we have this money and we have X amount of groups and individuals who are going to be asking and how are we allocating that money?
We've got, the way I understand it is that we've got two requests that were made that are very timely. This because this would seem to be exactly what the stimulus is for, to start up something. And the hazard pay because it's already late in the coming. And if we would defer this for a whole game plan later this year, it's going to be well beyond the period of hazard pay. I mean, as you're going to see from the report, which you guys have hopefully already read, I'm assuming, it's hard enough to deal with the hazard pay issue now and identifying who gets it and all that. It'll be that much harder if we defer it. These are two items that are before you tonight. And I, you know, frankly, I would ask you to consider both items for action so they can appear on the June agenda because we don't have any meetings in July and August is already going to be packed. And it's going to be very difficult to defer this and kick this down the road. I mean, it's kind of like the chamber is paralyzed right now.
No, no, and I'm, and I'm saying that my questions really have like nothing to do with the chamber. We're just looking at these financial allocations, but not looking at the big picture of like, what are our priorities with the stimulus money?
I think after these two requests, Kindon has suggested that we defer any further requests until we have an overall strategy. If I'm misreading that, then you can let me know. But I, that's what I gathered from his comments.
Okay, and then, right, and I, that's why I just wanted to ask these. And now I just had some questions from the chamber. I wanted to know if, so I'm looking at the letter and it says the Calabasas Chamber, the Calabasas Chamber Board of Director respectfully requests 200,000, but the recommendation is for 150?
Yes.
Okay. And then my question is, what about some of our, more of our small businesses that we, businesses that might need any individual assistance? That's not a part of this at all, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then maybe a question for Bridget. Oh, hey, Bridget. No, just a huge thank you again. And those questions were questions that I would ask regardless whatever proposal was in front of us. But my question is with, you went over this, but with the money, let's see, this includes money for an office space?
Well, what we did was we presented our financial forecast. So part of that is office space. And in the outline of the stimulus, I think funding would be allowed for office space, if I'm correct. So it was just a matter of getting us back into Calabasas to set up shop and make sure that we are on the right path to get started with the in-person connecting community and so forth.
Okay, and then I know during the pandemic, you really went out of your way to help all businesses, even if they weren't members of the chamber. And with this money, that it would continue to do so as well?
Well, what I was explaining to, I not talking about this to Mary Sue, is that memberships are, as Mary Sue was saying before the pandemic, there is a, you know, mindset on chambers as a whole. So memberships are not really embraced by millennials or Gen Z. They feel that memberships are archaic and they, you know, that a Chamber of Commerce should be there no matter what. And you know, Alicia, more than anything, you and Mari, I was answering so many phone calls that I'm texting everybody saying, okay, what's happening with the city? Should I be doing this? Should I answer this? You know, people feel that a Chamber of Commerce, regardless, is a organization that needs to be available at all costs, no matter what, residents, businesses and so forth. So there's a disconnect on what or how we survive as a nonprofit. So, you know, yes, some of that funding, we'd have to, like Mike was saying, we have to pivot. We have to rethink what our strategies are, how we're going to develop the economic stability of this community without people feeling like they have to pay a chamber membership. Right? So those are the things that we have to address as a chamber and our board.
Okay, no, thank you. And I guess just the thing back to, I don't know if it's staff or colleagues, that I want to make sure when we're looking at our stimulus money in addition to supporting the chamber and other organizations in the big picture, like there's some individuals, if, what are, I guess, how are we going to respond to individual small business needs? Because that's like an equal part of the economic development and that's something that we're going to have to discuss. If we're going to do another round of small business grants, I don't know what the answer to that is. But I want to make sure that we look at it. And then my question is to James and Peter, how do you, I think you discussed this already, but how do you envision the allocation of the funds, it broken down into how?
Well, what we anticipate is the city attorney now has the breakdown of the chamber's needs. And as, as we allocate, the, the proper uses will be identified. There are some uses in there, correctly, if I'm wrong, Matthew, which cannot, that probably wouldn't fall within the stimulus. So that's why it is somewhat less than what they were asking for anyways, because they couldn't use it for those purposes anyways. So the first 100,000 is allocated, then they come back with receipts. And assuming everything's in good order, the next 50,000 is allocated. That's how I envisioned it. It's not 150,000 now.
And I would further recommend that if the council majority supports this approach, that the agreement that this would be governed is that we added a, a new clause to the existing contract to cite back to the federal regulations and make it plain that it's a reimbursement basis and that it would have to fit within the uses, which includes assistance to nonprofit organizations that responds to the negative economic impacts of the COVID-19 emergency. Certain of the base operating expenses would not qualify.
So Matt, you're recommending is that the language be up to, because it's as a reimbursement?
Correct, up to whatever amount the council may say.
Okay, and, and then we'll make you available to the chamber before they do an outlay, they can make sure that they can be reimbursed for it?
Yes, that would be in order.
Okay, so then it may, you know, depending on what they come up with, if they don't spend the money, they don't spend the money. Somehow I have a feeling they'll find a way. But if they don't, then it's only up to 100,000 the first year. And then fif, up to 50,000 the next year.
I, I might have some more questions, but I guess after, I really want like an outline of like what our priorities are in terms of this money. So we know how we're, what the priorities are on how to spend them. And then I just wonder if there's other organizations in the community that are going to come forward and say, we want a chunk of the stimulus money as well. So I, I mean, just what are our guidelines? What are our guidelines for distributing the funds?
We're, we're, I, I mean, Kindon, I'm happy to put that on a separate agenda item in the future after we're done with these two, to take your suggestion and not disperse any more funds until we identify them.
Okay, thank you.
These two are timed, these two are timely, that's why they're here. David, you have not, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay.
Ready. First of all, and, and like everyone else, I'm, I thank the chamber, I thank everyone. I am a big fan of the chamber and have supported. That's why, along with all of us, we've supported increasing each year for the past number of years before the pandemic, up to even the last vote was $40,000 a year that the council and city gives towards the chamber with restriction or with suggestions or lists of agreements attached to it. As my other colleagues have said with other matters, I was, I understand how this came here now. I was not happy that it did not have a staff report or weighing in such as what I heard Kindon saying tonight or recommendations or analysis by Michael or in this case Ron Allers, who Peter and I as the budget task force have been working with and meeting with a number of times. So I would have liked to have had a staff report, as I've heard on many other items. So that's just number one. I do have, I, I have a Calabasas business. I've been a business owner here for 27 years and a very tough year for all of us, the last 14 months, actually. Not just, certainly I under, understand that. I had a couple of questions based upon the comments. So Bridget, I'll ask you, and then I've received some last minute emails, texts, et cetera, from public because they weren't even aware of this item. So I'm going to ask some of those. But Bridget, I heard you talking, wasn't sure if it was a combination or not. If you're on, you said the chamber, were you helping with other? I, I know you did have lots of Zoom conferences and there were some meetings to help with PPP and SBA loans. Did the chamber also apply for and receive SBA and, and/or PPP 1 and 2 loans?
Yeah.
Okay, and that went to the rent and the salaries of employees, correct?
It went to the rent until we could, and then we were on a month-to-month and now Dickens then leased the space. And then we had to do a reserve of cash so that we could stay operational. So the decision of the board execs were to, you know, move the business remotely into my home. And that's how we manage at the, at the current state, our work remotely.
Okay, thank you. And that was a PPP 1 and 2, two times, I presume?
No.
Just one?
No, well, PPP was not available to the Chamber of Commerce because of the nonprofit and.
Oh, the SBA, E I P L or SBA.
The SBA was minimal, it was 16,000, but we had to return 10 because they wanted to convert the 10 into a loan.
Right.
So the 6 was forgiven, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And then next quick question for Matt, and this was just based on what you said and maybe it was just my misunderstanding or your misspeak. You indicated in any agreement, you would indicate the funds with regard to a nonprofit organization. Now, the chamber is not a nonprofit organization, right?
Yes, we are.
Oh, my apologies.
Chamber is a registered 501.
501(c)(3). Okay, I know that.
We're 501(c)(6), David, and we also have a 501(c)(3) as the education foundation that we provide student scholarships.
Correct, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. And, and again, I was happy to support and bring forward, co-bring forward the $500,000 grant program that our council provided to local California businesses. So I definitely am supportive of our local businesses and continue to be. Couple of questions, which I know we've raised. I, I guess this goes to what I thought Kindon's comments were and how I heard them and understood them. And I'll ask you to clarify, Kindon. I thought you were very clear in indicating that this is something, and I think Mary Sue picked up on it, that the, and Alicia, that the councils should discuss and come up with a plan for the stimulus funds, such as we've asked before, and it's on the agenda for future date, about the Woolsey Fire Funds before we start and continue to distribute them. And that's something that I do support. I think it's something we need to look at very carefully, if that's what you said, Kindon. And I'll ask if that is, my understanding is correct of your comments.
That's correct, council member. My recommendation was that we look at the, these one-time monies as a whole, meaning the stimulus monies, the Woolsey Fires, but also look at it in the big picture that we look at, you know, two years out, five years out, 10 years out. What are some of the immediate needs or the needs of the city looking in that? But also looking immediate for, you know, just as some of these instances with the chamber and so forth, but looking at everything together before a decision is made on that.
Okay, I just want, I thought I understood that and I wanted to clarify it before we go any further. Thank you. The other comments and, and Matt has provided us with some detail and we've all read it. I was, had concern and want to be very careful about the use of stimulus funds, making sure what we're doing is 100% legal and proper, not, not a question. However, if we reach an agreement to provide certain amount of funds to the chamber or any other appropriate organization, that we're doing it properly, legally. And there, there are different ways we can do things. I mean, I jotted down some notes here, I won't go into them now. But they just came up to my mind. I would like to have Kindon's input. I'd like to have Ron's input on where we are financially and, and the council as a whole to discuss the use of these one-time funds. And then one other question which came to me, and it, it's really a comment, I don't even think it's a question, is while we did give $500,000 or appropriated those funds for small business or business grants, up to $10,000 for Calabasas businesses, the Chamber of Commerce has businesses in it and members, which may be, I, I don't know the numbers, Bridget would know, maybe 40% that are non-Calabasas or maybe more, Calabasas residents or businesses. And is that in any way affect the manner in which we distribute or provide funds that are stimulus funds earmarked for a certain purpose? So those are my, there are some inquiries, there are some questions. And I, I certainly, in, in a, in a short time, not a long time at all, would like to have that discussion as a council, come to conclusions. And I don't know why we couldn't do that within the next, again, it's up to everyone else within the next meeting, but prior to the next meeting, rather than putting it off a long time. But at least take our time and do this properly. That would be my last comment.
Well, we have one meeting, which is June 23rd, and then we do not have another meeting until August. The June 23rd meeting is completely full. So if, if we defer this and the hazard pay issue for later in the year, we're not going to get to it till August, September.
Okay, my understanding, excuse me, it was the 23rd is also the, but we have the budget because of delay, right? And, and to me, this is appropriate discussion as part of the budget as well. But that's something, just my two cents.
Well, I would just say that these items were already discussed and asked to be put on the agenda and hashed out in large part prior to Kindon indicating that he wanted to put a pause on things. I don't mind putting a pause on things. I do not want to put a pause on this or the hazard pay issue because it will be very difficult to defer it. Kindon?
Yes, Mayor, Council, one of the things I, I think led to my recommendation for a pause on this is usually, in most instances, cities will start their budgetary process as early as January or February. With me being hired and not starting in the position until March, I feel like I came a little bit late to the game on that process and it actually delayed, I think, the process. And so unfortunately, you know, my goal as the city manager is to present a budget to the council, at least a draft budget, much, much earlier than June. That you, the council should see, you know, a really good picture of the, the upcoming fiscal year plus projected expenses over the next five to 10 years. And, and that should include things like, you know, depreciation and, and infrastructure cost. It shouldn't include debt and, and looking at that. And so as I came to the city, looking at some of those different financial issues that we're going to be addressing in, in the budget study session, hence the recommendation that we put a pause and look at some of these things as a bigger picture.
Well, except this is not part of the general budget. This is part of the use of stimulus funds, which is separate.
That's correct, but one of the purposes of the stimulus funds is to cover lost revenues from the city. And I think it would be good for the council. And I think it would be good for the council to understand fully what that is over the last year and a half of what's been lost. In regards to revenues to the city.
Well, the longer we wait, the less likely we're going to stimulate the economy in the in the. Time that we need to do it. I would not recommend deferring this. Because it won't be decided on the twenty third of June. It'll be decided months and months down the line. So these two items, I mean, we can vote on it and see who wants to have it and who doesn't. Oh, Mary Sue, your hand's up, sorry.
Actually, I realized Peter hasn't spoken, so I'll wait to to provide my. Additional comments, sorry.
Perhaps staff can work on that, okay.
Sorry, I had to get my light back on here. You know, I did speak a little bit before the public comment period, but I should, I guess, summarize my my thoughts on the issue. I think. First of all, the Chamber of Commerce is definitely. One place that we definitely want to stimulate using these these funds. I do appreciate the city manager's comments on taking a holistic look at these grants and figuring out how we want to distribute them. And I certainly appreciate that. I would hope that tonight at a bare minimum, we could agree on. At least a portion of the money to go to the Calabasas Chamber of Commerce. And perhaps get that portion going now while we figure out the rest of it. One of the things that James and I discussed in our committee was. You know, instead of cutting a check for two hundred thousand, let's make it a hundred and fifty, and let's spread it out over the two years. So. Maybe what we could do is allocate fifty thousand tonight to get this ball rolling. With the understanding that the committee's recommendation is still a hundred and fifty, and when we look at the thing holistically with the city manager. We could come back and reassess that other hundred. It doesn't have to be an annual thing. We could do that, you know, we could do fifty thousand now and after we analyze the budget. Do another fifty thousand in three months. This way, the Chamber of Commerce can get going now. If you would agree with me that we're going to give something to the Chamber of Commerce, I would just suggest that we get that started now because as. As our mayor's pointed out, time is of the essence. And again, I want to reemphasize one more thing is we put some conditions on this money. And the one that is most important to me is. The seventh one, which is that we're requiring the Chamber of Commerce. To come up with a program to help us put new businesses into our empty storefronts. And we don't currently have a program doing that in the city. And if we can have the Chamber of Commerce reaching out and starting to tackle that problem. I think it's a good use of our city money. So again, I would agree with our city manager. We do need to take a look at this holistically. But I think we can allocate some of that money tonight so that the Chamber of Commerce can get moving.
Mary Sue?
I have a question for our city manager. Would you be able to provide us with? A strategy or some guidance at our June budget workshop? Is that too much to ask in a short period of time? Or what kind of, when you say pause? What's your best case scenario of when we would be able to promote? The availability of the funds and start allocating?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Protam. And I think. So with the budget city session, our intent is to outline outline a big picture of the city's finances, not just for this upcoming fiscal year or the upcoming. Two years, but look at it a little bit more broadly. But you know, I think, you know, council member Kraut offered a wonderful. Solution to this is we can do this incrementally. You know, it gives the the opportunity as the policymaking board. To allow, the council as the policymaking board to allow the chamber to do some some work that needs to be done now. But it also allows us as a as a council to come back and staff in the same room and look at the bigger picture and then further allocate other funds.
Right, then my last comment is, you know, I'd like to see what. What you are holding in your hand. It's kind of tough to vote on something. You made a reference to item seven on a list. I haven't seen that list.
Item seven, well, it was item six, which is.
My point is that I feel like we're just kind of winging it, and that's not how. We we have a very high standard of operation here in Calabasas. I, if you, if if the chamber is at risk of collapsing until the end of June. I'd want to know about that. And and but if it's not, if it can wait, and I guess that's a question for you, Bridget, how urgently? Do you need even incremental funds? Or, you know, the benefit is to waiting is you might get a larger sum if we. If we have more time to think about this, but could you answer how? How sustainable is the chamber right now?
We're we're not collapsing, that's for sure. It's just that we are surviving because. We're utilizing a home. As a remote office and the effort that I put into it is. Driving into the city to meet with people and hold our meetings. But it's a disconnect, not being at in Calabasas is a difficult. You know, way to do business because you want to be in the community and you want to be visiting. These businesses. My concern, more or less, is I lost a great office manager who couldn't be. She couldn't sustain it because she's a mom and so forth. So, you know, we lost her and and staff is one of my key issues. You can only, you know, run an organization that, you know, for so long by one person. So. The, we are not cash for, but we are. Hoping that we can project, you know, where we're going to be. We want to look for space and so forth, and this would have been a big help for us.
I see no reason to defer. I see, Peter suggested a compromise I wouldn't have even gone along with originally. I see no reason to defer this. For what purpose? Everyone here has said they're will, you know, they're supportive of the chamber. We're going to give them something. This was a bad idea. You know, in the first place to go down this road where we already had discussed two separate items that we wanted to use the stimulus money for. Not out of the general funds, and now the council's saying they want to kick it till. This late summer or fall. I just don't think that's very fair.
All due respect, James, this is the first discussion I've had about it. Nobody's spoken to me. Until a few days ago or a week ago about this. So I don't know what discussions. We didn't have it at the day.
Go ahead. We're we're the subcommittee and we've been discussing it and I. It's been on a future agenda item list, so I don't know what you're saying. I mean, you know, unlike, for example, the grant program, which I was supportive of because it was a good idea. I got twenty four hours notice of a five hundred thousand dollar expenditure. I didn't even get a staff report until the night before. But I went along with it because it was the right thing to do.
Two things, I know we have a like a compromise on the table until we. Look at the bigger picture, but one thing that I was thinking in the interim, I didn't know if we have any like extra meeting space. So before the chamber can get a. A full office if they're, you know, if Bridget had to have a meeting with a prospective business or someone, if we could help them in that regard. If we have any extra space is not being utilized, I mean. I mean, things aren't operating at a hundred percent capacity. I'm sure we could find some space for Bridget to meet with people.
And council member, that's something that we could look at.
Well, let's just ask up or down. If 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 a majority of the council is not willing to allocate fifty thousand dollars on June twenty third. Then we won't appear on there. Which I assume would apply to the next item as well. If we're going to defer everything till later in the year, I think it's wasteful, but but if that's a majority's decision, that's a majority's decision. Mary Sue?
Oh, I was just going to say as, and I don't know how. Councilmember Weintraub feels about. Postponing the next item hero pay until we have more. Strategic information and and just just a plan. But I would be willing to postpone that. I. The workers will be there. They've been heroic. This is a way to show, you know, our gratitude and help them with. Additional expenses that they accrued, but I think that. They would understand that it it's better to to wait on on this. And and do it, do it later.
When would later be, like realistically?
Well, it sounds like at the workshop, we would have at least an initial. Plan and maybe. Kinden, do you think that? Well, I guess part of our discussion tonight was to provide you with a kind of a guideline on an amount of money, wasn't it?
Yeah, a couple of different things, but I think as part of the budget study session, one of the things that we could do is. Include an allocation in the next year's fiscal budget for the chamber. And have that be part of the discussion that could be, you know, amended or changed. But at least, you know, if there's some recommendation of what we want to, I think, again, first, use that study session as to understand. Our financial situation and where we want to be in the future and some of the other options for using that stimulus money. But then also have the ability with the budget approval. Either in conjunction with that or as a separate item to allocate funds for from the stimulus. Relief package as well.
That's exactly what we're doing tonight, Ken. And tonight, we weren't going to allocate anything. Tonight, we were going to. Agree to do it at the June twenty third meeting to allocate a certain amount. So how does that differ from what we're doing tonight?
So, James, just to be, so tonight. Tonight gives recommendations for the budget study session?
Yes, tonight was not the allocation. Tonight was going to be the discussion. After which we discuss what we would be willing to allocate for this and the hazard pay, and then the actual allocation. Was going to be on June twenty third. So there's there's a notice.
I think I misinterpreted. A little bit.
But if we don't.
Tonight, we're selecting amounts. This is what is is difficult to select amounts for both. Both requests when we don't have. The bigger picture of where else we could or should spend the money. I think what I heard you say earlier, James or Peter, I think it was your idea was to approve fifty thousand and then move these two items. Into the study session. Was that correct?
Oh, you're muted, Peter.
You're muted, Peter.
Thank you. That that's correct, and I'd like to take these one at a time. We're on one item right now. I do understand that when we talk about allocating these funds, we need to understand that they. Are requesting money out of the same funds, so we have to consider them collectively. But to end the discussion on the Calabasas, not to end the discussion, but to culminate the. Conversation on the Calabasas Chamber of Commerce, I'd like to make a motion. And my thought behind it is simply that I would agree, we don't know how much of our stimulus money we can allocate to this. You know, entity or that entity, and it does need to be studied as a whole. But I would propose that out of four point four million, there is no way in conscience that I can imagine us dedicating less than fifty thousand dollars. To the Chamber of Commerce. So to get this ball rolling for tonight, I'd like to start with a fifty thousand dollar. Request to allocate to the Chamber of Commerce to be done at our next meeting, and we can deal with any additional funds at a later date. That's my, that's my motion. Hopefully, we can move forward and then talk about hero pay on the next item.
I'll second that, but I I'm going to second that just because. This is a little awkward, but I do not like how this happened and I agree that it should need. All all reports coming to us should have staff. Reports and and recommendations or thoughts. And so. I appreciate the work you two did on behalf of the chamber, but. You you put us in an awkward position not having a lot of information, and so I'm looking forward to the end of June.
Yes?
I just want to say that I think everyone can agree, or at least David, Mary Sue, and I. This conversation or questions have nothing to do about the great work of the chamber. It's just. And like, I want to make sure that it's so hard on Zoom, like not being able to see Bridget or any of the members like that connection, but none of this has anything to do with the work. It's just, we didn't have a staff report and we're being asked to make these huge allocations, not being, not seeing the big picture of the city. So. I would support the fifty thousand. It allows the chamber to do what they need to do until we can get to that next move. But I think. When we have that big picture meeting, it's going to be much clearer on what we can give to everyone and what the city needs to keep for itself to. Offset our own losses. So I'll support the compromise.
All right. Well, this wasn't meant to be a motion, but I think that's appropriate given the course of the discussion. So Mari, you can take the role.
Councilmember Kraut? Councilmember Shapiro?
Yes.
Councilmember Weintraub?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Hour?
Hi.
Mayor Bosa.
Hi.
Harry five zero, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so at the next agenda, we're going to have a full discussion of the stimulus as well. And then we're going to have the fifty thousand ready to go and maybe the hero pay depending on what happens.
So correct, so based on the motion, we will have a resolution allocating the fifty thousand of the stimulus monies right now for the chamber on the June twenty third. Agenda, and then we'll also discuss the other one time monies as the big picture.
Okay. So fifty thousand and then the then the rest of the discussion regarding the chamber and any other groups at that time. Got it. Okay. Next, we're going, thank you, Bridget. Good night. All right, next, consideration of establishing program guidelines and appropriation amount for the one time. Hero slash hazard payment to frontline grocery workers. Michael McConville's here and he's. Done a PowerPoint that he's, are you going to share your screen, Michael?
Yes, I'll share my screen and. And so we're clear, we are moving forward with this consideration. This isn't part of the pause mentioned earlier.
Well, let's see what the, I don't know.
Yeah, let's see the full report.
Let's see, we're going to definitely take the report tonight. What the council decides to do, I don't know.
Okay, very good.
And we, and we'll hear from, by the way, members of the public that might be here for this, please don't go. If you have comments, we want to hear from you tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members. To provide a little bit of background, the city attorney provided a brief report on the matter of hero pay. At the April fourteen city council meeting. City council directed staff to return with a recommendation for guidelines for a one time hero payment. Funded with American Rescue Plan Act stimulus funds explicitly for frontline grocery workers. The purpose of tonight's item is to seek approval for a general program guideline as well as an appropriation amount. So to determine how the funds are going to be distributed, we're going to go over staff's recommendations for definitions of a retail grocery store. As well as definition of a frontline grocery worker. Staff's recommendation for a retail grocery store would be any establishment located within the city Calabasas that. Employes at least fifteen employees and devotes seventy percent or more of its sales floor area to retailing a general range of food products. Or receives seventy percent or more revenue from retailing a general range of food products. Or is more than eighty five thousand square feet and devotes ten percent or more of its sales floor area to the sale of food products or merchandise. That is non-taxable. The stores that meet this definition in the city currently are Albertson's, Ralph's. Gelson's, Trader Joe's. Juan and Rite Aid, six stores total. Moving on to the definition of a frontline grocery worker, this would be an individual who is employed by a retail grocery store as defined on the last slide, within the city of Calabasas at the time final program guidelines and requirements are approved. And is not classified as salaried or exempt management by the covered employer. The estimated number of workers meeting this definition is four hundred and fifty. So now that we uh, have an idea of the stores that are eligible as well as the employees that are eligible, now we can move on to recommended distribution options, right? How we actually get the funds. Um, which at this point, we're going to be redeemable Visa gift cards into the hands of our uh, frontline grocery workers. Um, option one is in simply an equal distribution. So this would distribute the program appropriation amount equally amongst all eligible frontline grocery workers. Length of employment and hours worked would not be taken into account. Um, so if uh, s- some notes here is that this is the least complex and time-consuming option for both city staff and grocery stores. And it gets the pay to eligible workers as quickly as possible. It treats workers equitably. Um, the third point is that it's similar to other hero pay ordinances in the fact that LA City, LA County, and Malibu don't take into account length of employment and time classification status um, for their hero pay ordinances. And then finally, um, this does resemble um, various one-time thank you pay bonuses that were voluntarily offered by grocery stores during the pandemic. Uh, the second option would be to distribute program funds based on length of employment, based on the chart below. Um, this chart is illustrative, so uh, these, you know, length of employment timeframes and percent of payment could change. Um, but this is, you know, provides additional consideration to employees who may have endured greater health risks due to a longer duration of time employed. The third option, um, distributes the program appropriation amount based on average weekly hours worked. So again, this is an illustrative chart that shows particular um, average weekly hours worked and then a percent of hero payment. The idea in, in both of these, option two and option three are to simplify things, but again, it's illustrative and, and can change. Um, this option provides consideration to employees uh, who may have endured greater risk due to working a higher number of shift hours. If that's consideration that council would like to take into account. Um, on the staff report, there was an option four, which is um, a reimbursement method or issuing a card or issuing funds that are restricted to being spent within the city of Calabasas. Staff is no longer recommending this option because after recent guidance issued by the US Department of Treasury, um, it, it would not be permissible to attach conditions to, at, at least in the manner we were discussing. Um, that being said, we have, I have communicated, staff has communicated with the chamber and there is some options we can use to entice or incentivize um, perhaps via coupons or, or special promotions issued to the grocery workers as well. Um, to try to, you know, capture as many of those funds and keep them in Calabasas as possible. So the funding um, is expected to come from the four point four million in the American Rescue Plan Act funds. Um, as I think we've already stated, approximately half of that amount is going to be received on or before June one, twenty twenty-one. And of that uh, half amount received on June one, uh, staff is seeking direction on, on what appropriation amount, um, what appropriation the amount would be. So again, formally, the requested action are to approve the hero payment eligibility definitions and requirements that we've gone over. Um, and then second, approve a distribution option as well as an entire appropriation amount for the hero payment program. And that concludes the presentation.
Okay, thank you. Um, let me, members of the members of the public, has anyone wished to speak on this item?
I don't see anyone. I don't, one person
One person identified as Sloan. Why don't we bring her in? Name and city of residence?
Hi guys, my name is Sloan Balkwell. I live in Encino, California, and I've worked for Gelson's Calabasas for approximately upwards of twenty-three years. Um, I'm just here to say thank you um, from all of us um, grocery workers. Um, we appreciate the willingness and the effort put forth by your staff to come up with these options on hero pay distribution. Um, I and my fellow employees have discussed them and agree, and hopefully you do too, that option three would be the most fair option to all employees involved as it pays out per hour that we worked. Some of us worked a lot of hours, uh, me included. Please know that this is just us giving you your, our opinion in an effort to help you guys decide on what you want to do. Um, and regardless of what option you choose, um, we're humbled and we're grateful. Humbled by the fact that you are willing and were willing to hear us. Grateful that you listened and are listening and appreciative of the fact that you have seen our struggles over this past year. When in fact, it really should have been our employers wanting and willing to do this for us. Please know that we greatly, greatly appreciate that. Um, on behalf of the entire Gal- Calabasas Gelson staff, and I think I probably speak for the other six supermarkets. Um, thank you for respecting us enough to take this upon yourselves to um, respect us and to show us that you appreciate us. Um, and our, and our contributions to the community this past year. Please know that I um, as a, I want to say a community member, my daughter goes to school at Calabasas. Please know that everyone in my store, um, we all shop. We all work there. My daughter goes to school there. We do a lot of things in your community and we, we contribute to your community. And we are humbly grateful for anything that you might choose to do. Um, and just thank you for your time and for your effort.
Okay, thank you, Sloan. Um, anyone else wish to speak in public comment before I close the public comment portion? Mari, do you see anybody else?
No one else, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'm closing public comment. Um, we're gonna go around, uh, Alicia.
I just realized, and Michael, I'm sorry, I, this question just came to me. I wish I had thought of it earlier because I don't know if we know the answer. Do we know how much here, how much was given to the employees in the other communities as part of hero pay?
Um, yes.
It was three month. I'm just trying to remember.
No, it was actually, it was four months. And uh, it was five uh,
The months varied and it was five dollars more an hour.
Yeah, so city of LA, city of LA and county of LA were both sunset after a hundred and twenty days and they were both five dollars an hour. And I'll add that the other cities of which I'm aware that have done a hero pay program have all stuck to the five dollars per hour additional wage.
Okay. And it was it up to, was it based on like a forty-hour work week or I'm just trying to like crunch some numbers?
The typical programs we've seen adopted so far have been five dollars an hour for every hour worked. Not assuming, not assuming not worked, but rather requiring from the date of adoption going forward that the employer pay an extra five bucks per hour worked.
Was it like up to a certain amount of hours per week?
Uh, my understanding is most of them have been for however many hours a person may work. So if someone worked overtime, they would get the, they would get a five dollar an hour bump even on the overtime time.
Okay.
But Michael, you've taken a closer look at that.
You, you know what? Can I jump in, Alicia? I don't know if this will help you. I penciled out a full-time amount for three months. Five dollars per hour, forty hours a week, comes out to two hundred dollars per week per person. I multiplied that by twelve weeks or three months and I came out uh, up with twenty-four hundred dollars per full-time worker. And if you multiplied that by, I think Michael identified four hundred and forty-seven dollars, it's a lot of money. It's almost five hundred thousand dollars.
A million.
About full-time for everybody, assuming they were, but they weren't.
Yeah, it's a million dollars.
A million, not five hundred thousand.
It's a million.
Mary Sue? Your voice is gone again.
I got a million seventy-two eight hundred, like almost one point one.
Is that better? Well, we'll definitely need, need to drill down when we start looking at this. That's not what I came up with. And I sent that to you, Kendon. I thought that that was right. Oh, no.
A million? Did you get a million now?
No.
It's over a million.
Like a million, okay. Okay, I just wanted to have the numbers.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna look it up. Um, okay.
But that's, but that's based on, like, if you look at Gelson's, it says fifty full-time, fifty part-time. And then like Ralph's is forty-five part-time. So it would be less. Like, we don't have, we, it would be a lot less money.
Two hundred.
Well, we don't know, I, I mean, you know, we don't know what part-time is. Ten hours a week, thirty hours a week?
Oh, right.
So can I, can I throw something out um, as a point of discussion? Um, I, I heard Sloan what she was saying and um, option three, where it's really based on how many hours you spent on the frontline. And what I also thought might be helpful is looking at a three-month window of, and I, I don't want to be morbid here, but at the most critical time where, where it was so dangerous and so frightening. Um, and yet we're reminded that these people, these wonderful grocery workers like Sloan went to work every day to help sustain us. Um, so I almost would want to look and see what the amount looks like. And you know what? There are so many gaps, Michael, in the number of employees. I know they weren't responding to our requests, but maybe we need to get that data, look at option three and look at the most critical three months of the pandemic, whether it's December, January, February last year or the summer. So that's my thought.
Well, I mean, I, I think the easier way, Mary Sue, is just to come up with a number and then then just allocate it because you're never going to get, and the, the way you're doing it, I mean, first of all, if the number came out anywhere near a million, my answer would be no. I would not use a million dollars of the stimulus money or actually more than that for this project. I would say get a base amount of how much per employee we're willing to give and then just cover that whole amount in one fell swoop. I think that's what staff was asking for, if I'm not mistaken. Because they couldn't do any other calculation without knowing how much we were willing to spend.
Right, you can either choose a per-person amount or a total appropriation. Those would be the easiest method.
Wait, there's other options.
Yes, there are other options, just in terms of simplicity and, and but quickness. And again, so the numbers, I did speak to each of the um, store managers and they provided me those staffing numbers.
Oh, good.
As it relates to hours and some of the reasons why we didn't um, didn't maybe choose or recommend an hours-based approaches because one of the grocery stores said that they may not be able to provide those hours due to M O U collective bargaining agreements. Um, and, and for them recording and calculating hours, it, they insinuated it may be a, a burden on them to do so. I don't know how significant, but they stated as such, so. That's the reason why we chose a fixed amount, um, not based on hours.
All right, who would like to, Peter, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you. Um, yeah, I would agree. I think we need to pick an option on how to allocate it tonight if we can. And uh, then when we figure out how much money we can spend on this particular uh, item, it'll be just distributed amongst whatever employees are, are eligible. Um, I would strongly recommend that we go with option number three. And I would take it uh, and define it a little better. When we say the average hours worked, I would take a fifty-two week period and take the total number of hours and divide by fifty-two to come up with the hours, the average hours, so that if somebody's been working full-time throughout the pandemic, they'll get the hundred percent. If somebody is uh, just started six months into the pandemic and missed the, the critical point in time that, that Mayor Protem Hour was referring to, they couldn't possibly get the hundred percent because if they only started six months into the pandemic, they would average twenty hours per week, even if they did full-time for six months. If you follow my thinking there, Michael?
I do, yes.
So I'd like to see that. That way we are emphasizing rewarding the people that started in the beginning and served us throughout the whole pandemic. I want to go back to my comments that I made when we first looked at this, which is I can't get behind the idea that we should be dictating to grocery stores what their pay should be. Um, and I think we've taken this on as an idea conceptually here with the city is, is maybe we can, you know, shoulder some of this cost. And when the, when I hear that the grocery stores would be burdened by having to calculate hours to distribute the money that we're trying to give away to their employees, I've got a problem with that. I, I don't think we should shy away from asking the grocery store workers to do the math. And if they don't want to do the math, they need to let their grocery store workers know that we're ready to give the money and you know, the, the management of the grocery stores isn't willing to, to put forth the effort to help us distribute it. But I would really like to see us do it with option number three, so that we are emphasizing uh, the grocery store workers who worked the longest number of hours in the longest period of time and really served us throughout the pandemic.
All right, who else wants to speak on this? David?
Thank you. Um, I, I'm agreeing with both of you. I, I guess, Michael, which is the, which is the best way to, that you would recommend? And I'd give it to us to identify those workers who were there during the pandemic, let's say from mid-March to mid-March. If you're talking about a fifty-two week period, fifty-two weeks.
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
Just, eh, we're trying to benefit or, or come up with an amount. And I agree with James, by the way. I think we need to come up, just like with the chamber, we need to discuss it or come up with a, an amount rather than saying we're gonna go ahead and eh, cover four months of employees for five dollars an hour and then figure out the calculations later. I, I think we're going to end up above where we as a council were originally considering this, or at least I was. And I, I've heard James clearly as well. So while we want to help, uh, we want to do so with consideration of the city's finances as well.
Right, yeah, that total appropriation amount and then backing up not to exceed to that number, I think would, yeah, be the most easiest to answer.
Okay, and the other, I agree with you and my colleagues in that I do, I, I, the money should go to those who are on the front lines during the most difficult times. No, no offense to someone who started in January or, or even last week, except someone who worked from that timeframe when we were shut down pretty much until when we've started to open up. To me, those are the primary workers I'd like to see us uh, benefit. And uh, I don't know what the number is. I didn't hear a number from anyone yet of what we're talking about as a total consideration. But certainly am willing to discuss that.
Uh, Michael, I have a question for you. The way we're, the way you're recommending doing this, if we delay this a few months and somebody's worked there for twenty years and they retire next month, they're not going to get anything, right?
Uh, right, it, the way the, the definite, or the way the regular requirements are written now is that they have to be active at the time these are passed.
Okay, I, I don't want to mess around with this one too much, guys. This is really not appropriate. If you're, if you're, if you're uh, compensating people who worked during the pandemic, I, I think there's going to be some manifest unfair stories that happen out of this if we wait months and months and months and months and just piddle with this thing. So I'd like to give some direction so that it can come back soon. Just as I did with the chamber. I think that, that it would be grossly unfair for someone to retire, which may ha, which is gonna happen. You're talking about four hundred and fifty employees. Some of them are going to retire and leave and they'll get nothing. You're talking about four hundred fifty employees. Some of them are going to retire and leave, and they'll get nothing. And yet, someone who came in a few months ago is going to get something.
You know, I could certainly, between now and the next meeting, I could certainly get, it sounds, you know, more specific information from each store and you know, via option three and see what a, a, you know, the total amount would be, maybe based on a hundred percent being two hundred dollars or three hundred dollars, or if, if an appropriation amount is too hard to define right now.
I mean, doing the calculation, I mean, just, just if you want a number, I think David had asked about numbers. I mean, somewhere in the range of two hundred thousand dollars for this project, where, which would give everyone at least five hundred dollars. Maybe more if we could somehow require that those funds be spent here in the city by giving them a, not just a Visa card, but a gift card to the establishment of their choice in the city. Maybe more than that. But I can't see a million dollars. I, I just really can't.
So, James, for the same reason that we needed a bigger picture of the needs of the city and the community to plan how to spend this money, I think we needed to defer an amount until the end of June. Okay, I, I, I appreciate your sensitivity to people that may leave employment, but I don't think that should be a driving factor. I think a bigger driving factor, and I'm going to go back to the most critical wartime period of the pandemic. Those are the people that we really need to recognize. And, Michael, would that make your task easier if we had like a critical three-month window to identify people, identify if they were full or partial or one-third time? Would that narrow in?
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I think that certainly would be easy to get a three-month period from the grocery stores. And times, you know, the number of employees and hours worked, uh, assuming they're able to give that to me before, right, the next meeting, but that seems feasible.
Okay, I have council members who want to talk. I see three hands up. I see Alicia, David, and Peter. Or not David anymore. Oh, David, yes, back. Okay. Alicia, you want to go?
Oh, sure. No, I, it was just, I thought, I feel like we just need to come up with the formula, which it looks like we're getting closer to the option three, have the big picture discussion about how much we can allocate. I just worry about it being a, like, logistical nightmare for staff. I mean, I have no idea if these businesses are going to provide the names of these employees, the number of hours they worked, say we decide January, February, March. I, I just have no idea how we're going to get this information without making Michael's job crazy. Um, I don't know if, if the H R departments of these markets will provide that information.
Well, you could tell the departments that if they don't provide it, we'll have a little ordinance in place saying that for, for businesses that don't provide it, they can pay the hero pay.
Right, I mean.
Then we'll get the information.
But I may have been looking at the item twelve, attachment one, and only Gelson's and Ralph's provided their staff breakdown. So I just want to make sure that we can get the information and just maybe just come up with some formulas. And then we should just, if we make this decision at our June meeting, we can start providing the debit cards or gift cards, however we're doing it shortly after. So we're not really asking to wait that much. It'll just allow us, like Mary Sue said, that big picture of how much we can allocate.
Okay, Peter? Oh, no, Dave, I'm sorry, David, you moved.
Ah, I'm fast. Okay, I'll be quick. Quickly, I agree. I would like to see the uh, concept of gift cards, especially for businesses in Calabasas. Uh, if that would help us increase or agree upon an agreed, uh, increased number, it would also help stimulate the economy and businesses here, help the chamber. It provides a lot of opportunity. Uh, I think that's a great idea uh, to maybe provide additional funds. Option three of some sort provides the ability to give those who are working the most hours during the most difficult time to have a little more benefit. And I think that's appropriate, as opposed to an across-the-board amount for everyone. And last but not least, I have no problem if Matt would bring back that ordinance for those grocery stores that do not comply and don't want to comply with this opportunity we are giving them, then they, then we will sign that ordinance that they will be responsible for the five dollars an hour for the four months or three months.
Uh, Peter, your hand's up.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I just want to go back to what Councilmember Shapiro said in his first comment, which was, you know, looking at that period of mid-March to mid-March. Uh, that's really when we had the heroes out there. So I'd like to see option three, look at the average weekly hours during just that twelve-month period, if that makes sense to the rest of my fellow council members. And then along with that, I have to ask, is there a reason why we have to require that they're currently employed by the grocery store?
That was just a recommendation. I'm not sure how we would get the cards to, or the, the funds to the individual if they weren't employed there.
Another component on that one is that the regulations from the Department of the Treasury that govern the premium paid eligible workers element of the stimulus funds provide that a recipient may use the funds to provide premium paid eligible workers. It's all phrased in the present tense. So our expect, our understanding of the federal regulations is that it's not meant to be a back, uh, not meant to be a back pay program, but is meant instead, if this is the council's choice for the funding, to be on a forward-looking basis. As to the other, uh, question was raised, we cannot require the money to be spent solely within the city. It has to be additive as part of regular wages. However, I do think it would be lawful if we offered recipients a, a range of available gift cards, several of which might be businesses within the city, as long as at least one option is straight cash through, uh, uh, one of those credit card gift cards, uh, where it's expendable on anything. So that certainly would be a viable option. And we'll take a look at the idea of using a classic hero pay ordinance for any who doesn't, uh, comply with our document request.
You know.
That may be a bit, we'll, we'll evaluate that one, uh, closely. The other option, of course, is that any person, for any grocery store who refuses to provide the data, any individual could substantiate their hours worked by producing their pay stubs, which I realize folks may not have those from a year back, depending on how, how you keep your records, but that is at least an option for data that would be available to the city without going through the grocery stores.
So just, uh, first of all, I want to avoid the whole punitive thing on the grocery stores. I would hope that when, when the grocery stores see that the city of Calabasas is trying to give money away to their employees, that they just uh, you know, understand that we're, we're doing their employees a service and and hopefully we're just going to, you know, get their cooperation. Uh, your other point touched on one last thing that I wanted to mention, which is the taxability of this. When the, when the other cities gave a five-dollar bump in pay, uh, the person would probably be taking home three dollars and fifty cents an hour, give or take, depending on their tax bracket. Um, so they weren't actually going home with the full five dollars an hour. When we give this gift card, is this taxable?
I am no one's individual tax lawyer, so I, there's the caveat. But my expectation is that, yes, it would be part of an individual's taxable income.
Okay. When reported. One final question I had, Matt, as we're talking about it, you know, the ordinances are called hero pay or hazard pay, depending on what the ordinance is. But I would prefer to call this hazard pay if it's coming from the city. That sounds like a much more legally sustainable. If, if you call it a hero pay and that's what you're returning to the federal government with those stubs, I'm not sure that they're going to, I mean, I, I, I think they'd accept it, but I'm, it's a much more questionable prospect. So when our correspondence, can we make sure we call it hazard pay?
Yes, that'd be fun.
Thank you. Mary Sue?
I just, um, have one more consideration for staff and my colleagues and and it, Peter, you said again that you would like to see a one-year period. And that will scoop up a lot more people um, than if we took a look at the most critical time. So I guess it, I, I just wanted to point that out. I know that everyone that worked there um, deserves something, but I don't know that we can do that. So I just wanted to mention that.
Um, what is the expectation then for June twenty-third?
We may have to discuss it more.
One option the council may choose would be for staff to return with the necessary documents, probably a resolution creating a program under option three with, uh, sort of a lay it out and leaving blank the amount per worker to be determined by the, and leaving also blank the total allocation. With that to be determined, the mapper worker based on the selected relevant period for which the weekly hours will be counted, sort of, um, a fill-in-the-blank, if you will, for the council to then fill the blanks. And once the council is comfortable with the total allocation.
Okay, but if you do it that way, then what we need with the missing factor there is, we need to know under each of the formulas that Michael's going to present, how much the worker would get under each calculation, under each appropriation amount, like a sliding scale. So if we did fifty thousand, each worker would get this. If we did a hundred thousand all the way up, you know, so we could choose, because without knowing that, it's kind of hard to decide.
I think we'd be able to get, um, at least.
Rough estimate.
Yeah.
Okay, is that sufficient direction?
I think there's one more thing tonight, and that is, you know, count, or Mayor Protem Mauer mentioned, you know, a shorter period of time. Uh, I would certainly entertain that too, but I think we should probably give Michael some direction tonight on, you know, what period of time are we, we presenting this hazard pay for? Is it mid-March to mid-March is was, you know, started by, you know, Councilmember Shapiro, or is it you know, just the, the first three months or the first six months, or what, what, what period are we looking at here? And I guess I'm, I'm open to twelve months or shorter.
I, I don't have a preference. Alicia, your hand, or is your hand up, Alicia? I can't.
Yeah, I was that. I would like to look at like the height of the pandemic. And I think that most of the employees that started working last March were still working, just my guess. I don't have any facts to be, back it up. We're still working during the height of it. But I think this is a unique program that the city is doing, and I think we can establish our own parameters. But I think that time was really scary, that like January, December, January, February, and anything we can do to help the workers that worked through that time to serve our community. I think that really justifies the cost of this program. So that would be my recommendation. And it's so easy to find that data, you know, when the real surge was, and especially in our own communities.
Okay, but I would point out that the, the surge, certainly December, January, February, was, was definitely a hazard moment. But also mid-March of twenty twenty, uh, April, May, as we tried to figure out what PPP was.
No, that's true.
Distancing, uh, so, you know, we have a few time periods there, that's.
That is, that is very fair, because there were so many unknowns that when everything was shutting down in the beginning. So no, I, I do stand corrected. That is a really good point. That, that these workers were there when everything else was shutting down. So I'm tired to do the math of how much months there are.
Why don't, why don't we let staff
Yeah.
take what, all this discussion and, and, and really do what they think is, is fair and best and.
Yeah.
There you go, Steph. Michael.
Sorry, Michael.
No, that, that's fine.
You, you can do it.
Yeah, so I'm going to go to March twenty twenty to March twenty-one, get a, and, you know, an average number, weekly work, and that's what I'll plug into option three. And I'll provide a sliding scale of multiple, um, rates or appropriations for you.
So I'm just going to say again that if you look at a whole year, you are looking at a lot of employees, more employees.
And what?
Huh?
It, for, more than four hundred fifty?
Yeah, they, I mean, they come and they go, and so.
They have to be.
I would only ask for active employees unless council wants to change that.
We can't. Active employees, oh, that are still working now?
Right.
Oh.
I read the relevant federal regulations. The requirement is that this money be for someone who's currently working.
So it's not going to be more than what, it's not going to be more than four hundred fifty, is it?
That would be my expectation based on the data so far, that the, the max universe is four fifty. How that breaks out across full-time, part-time is, we don't yet know.
And, and somebody who's only worked two months of that whole year period that's still active, they're new employees with if they work full-time, would get the same amount as somebody who worked the entire year?
Hired by, give a certain hire-by date.
That would, that would shrink their average, yeah.
Yeah, remember, we're doing the total average hours worked. So the total hours worked in the last, in that fifty-two-week period, divided by fifty-two. So if they're working forty hours a week for the last six months, but weren't employed before that, then their highest average is going to be twenty hours per week. They'll get fifty percent of the pay. Fifty percent of the, the hazard pay. So if we do it across the fifty-two weeks, that, that factors all of that in.
I don't envy Michael's job. Let's just, let's just put it that way. That's a lot, that's four hundred fifty multipliers and then an overall multiplier. I, I'm not sure I could do that. Even if you gave me the numbers. All right.
I sure, I sure can't.
Anything else, Michael? You, any other questions? Okay.
No, thank you so much.
Okay, thanks, Michael. We're going to move on. Um, informational reports, check register. No questions? Uh, task force reports? David?
Briefly, I was attended and was appointed to the SCAG Scholarship Committee first time. It's a great organization, something they do out of SCAG. Eleven scholarships for four thousand dollars each were appointed, three in L.A. County, high school seniors and community college students who are going on to four-year universities. Hopefully, we'll get some of our students applying, getting those next year. And tomorrow morning at eight AM, I'll be at the Valley Economic Alliance. Uh, Steve Allen Awards and Excellence Continuing Educational Awards for students as well, and hopefully some of ours. Thank you.
Any other task force reports? Okay, then we'll do the city manager's report, if you have anything, Kendon.
Yeah, just a couple items. Uh, council members, uh, mayor, uh, since our last meeting, we had the Palisades fire. Uh, I just want to thank fire personnel, law enforcement, others who were so active in, um, uh, working that fire. Uh, also appreciate staff and efforts to, um, uh, communicate to the public via our social media, uh, different, uh, news events and updates that we received. And also express our commitment from staff that, uh, we're going to continue to do more outreach, uh, more education and more preparation as we look at the upcoming fire season. And then finally, just one other item, I do want to, uh, let council know that our senior center won its first award from the National Council on Aging. This was, uh, an award that they won first place for the Festival of Arts. Uh, and this was in the cultural programs category for the national, I'm sorry, for the two, twenty twenty National Institute of Senior Centers Programs of Excellence. So we want to congratulate them, and we'll be getting more information than an actual, uh, presentation of that award, so the council can, uh, participate in that as well.
Okay. Future agenda item requests from anybody? Yes, Alicia, I see your hand up.
It's not necessarily maybe a future agenda item. Well, I guess it is, but something that I want to talk about is that when we return to in-person meetings, how are we going to continue engaging people that still want to have like an online option? Like, is there a way that we're going to be able to do some form of like hybrid model? I just want to be able to have that discussion, because I think we've been able to engage a lot of people in our meetings who might not necessarily have been able to participate. Um, so I just want to have that discussion on how to keep up with the public engagement when we return in person.
Uh, Kendon, perhaps you can report back at the next meeting, just as an informational item, what we're planning on doing?
Yes, thank you. We already have staff looking at that and watching what other cities do over the next few weeks. So we'll have some more information. Marty is actually one of the, the ones looking at that already.
David?
Sorry about that. It's late. Uh, I just wanted to see if we could, uh, get the city to look at and council look at drought preparedness and advanced planning for what is going to be a very long year this year and next year, according to everything we know, and, uh, we even heard tonight from one of our local representatives. So if there is, uh, agreement or second on that.
Um, do you want it sent to the Environmental Commission?
That would be wonderful.
Okay, uh, Kendon, can you? Okay, uh, Kenan, can you have it sent and then maybe because our commissions are always asking for things to do, they can make some recommendations to us, and that, of course, would come to us after the break. Thank you. Any other agenda item requests? Mary Sue?
I just wanted to add on to Councilmember Shapiro's suggestion about planning for the drought and that to, to my knowledge, none of the um landscape districts that uh we talked about even tonight are under any kind of water conservation guidance. Um, and so I would like the Environmental Commission to look at at those and just see, just as we are recommending not using anticoagulant rodenticides in landscaping, we look at shifting even our own planting, as beautiful as it is, the days of sprawling green lawns are over. Um, and we need to look at our own parks and our own public spaces and then the, the landscape districts is, that somehow could be considered. Thank you.
Okay. Alicia? You're, you're muted.
Sorry, I just forgot to add, I just wanted to confirm that street racing and ways to address it got sent to public safety or was going to go to public safety?
That is, it is going to go to public safety. Their next meeting is in July, and I hope to, to address it at that meeting.
Perfect. It was just on my mind, and I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Peter?
Yeah, I just wanna remind uh us that we had uh, that I had brought up a point before to put on the agenda for better using our commissions. I'd like that as a discussion item. Uh, I'm hearing tonight as well, some people recommended sending things to the Environmental Commission and such. I was gonna wait until after our broader discussion, but if I can just throw one out there as well, I'd, I'd like to see a a fiber optic master plan discussed by our telecommunications uh commission.
Okay, um, that's fine, and we will add that, Mari, to our future agenda and request. It won't be obviously until after our break.
Hey, James, James, there was a time that it, it I, I think I'm guilty that it needed two council members to put it on our council agenda for a discussion about sending items down to planning commission. I mean,
Yeah, but.
any commissions.
Uh, I, I understand that, but as, as I've said many times for the dais, and I, and I think I even addressed your uh hazard pay issue. Whenever someone makes a suggestion that's reasonably within the jurisdiction of the council, I provide the second vote.
No, no, not the council meetings. I'm talking about we've just heard at least three requests to have items heard by commissions.
Right.
And before that, we had to say, hey, I wanna put on the agenda an item about fiber optics, an item about drought policy. And then we would discuss it as a group and send it down.
I, I don't remember that. You wanted, well, I mean, that's gonna mean that we're gonna agendize every little item that's a request. Everything will be delayed, and then we're just gonna take a series of votes at each council meeting. I don't remember ever doing that.
I remember having to put things on the agenda to get it to a commission, for sure.
A majority?
Huh?
A majority?
Yeah, to have the council approve an item going to the commission.
Well, if you look at the protocols, I, I just don't recall it. I, I
Yeah.
Unless we, unless it was on paper and we never did it, that's possible.
We, what we've just done tonight, and I don't wanna go too long on this, is we've just given staff a ton of work by having them now develop these agenda packets and discussions and on important items, for sure. But it, we, I think we have to be really careful about just doing that.
I, I, I understand, however, I would, I, I do look at the commission agendas, and quite honestly, they've been fairly light over the la, over the years, and they beg us for work to do, and half the commission meetings are canceled. So I don't think they're overworked. I mean, eh, you would be correct if they were overworked. However, I will look at the protocol just to make sure that if you're right, then we'll do it that way. I don't want to not do it. I just don't remember it. Peter?
Yeah, the, the only thing I'd point out in that as well is that our interim city manager, Don Penman, had a great suggestion that he said occurs in other cities that he's worked in, which is that the council has a goal-setting session where we get all these ideas out at once, and then we prioritize them from number one to a hundred. That way, the city manager can then dish these out to staff and the commissions as needed in the order that we prioritize them. Uh, that would help avoid the kind of uh staff and commission burnout that, that uh Mayor Prodem Mauer might be speaking of. So uh, James, I can see you signing already. I'm just saying, maybe that's something we look at later in this year.
I'm only signing because.
Way of doing it moving forward.
I'm not, I'm signing because I'm thinking of the headache of if you do that and then an, an important item comes up in the middle of the year, where's that going? I mean, like the drought, we, you know, you may not know there's gonna be a drought a year ahead of time. So then we just don't address it? I mean, you know, you gotta, I, I don't mind doing it as long as it's flexible.
Okay.
Add and subtract. But we'll look at the protocols. Mari, if you could pull the protocols, I'll look at it tomorrow. And we'll.
Can you send those protocols to all of us, Mari? James, you and I need to look at those together.
We're gonna go the, through the protocols. Okay.
But everybody should have them, yeah.
Yeah, I have taken a quick look at the protocols, and I don't see anything that dictates the exact process for an item to refer to the commission, so that could be evaluated. I know on the council's agenda at a future meeting is to look at the protocols, so that would be an option to provide the precise process. But I did take a quick look now, and I don't see it dictated. It may have been past practice, though, which does vary over time.
I, I don't know. I, I.
Thank you.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe they just did it for me. I had to.
Actually, they did it for somebody else, but we're not gonna mention names. I, they did do something like that, but it was an unofficial rule. Well, we won't embarrass anybody. Um, okay. Any other uh, future agenda items? If not, then we're going to be adjourned until our meeting on June twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. We are skipping our first meeting because of graduations. Thank you, everybody, for being.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Bye.
Good night, all.
Good night, everyone.